Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing for October 21st, 2014. Clearly, we have a full house and we appreciate you all being with us this morning to participate in our zoning day. Our custom before calling the meeting to order officially is to present the invocation and a pledge of allegiance to our country's flag. Today's invocation will be presented by Reverend Christopher Chappell from Grace Community Christian Church on Stilesboro Road. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance presented by Officer Maury who has been with us for 12 years in Cobb County Police Department. For those that aren't already standing and desire to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge. Is Reverend, he's probably one of the guys on the line downstairs. So, he'll get it. Thank you.
It's funny, I was reading in proper today just in case I was going to pray. And it's reading about having patience and wisdom and common sense. But the one verse I thought that touched me kind of humorously was "The glory of the young is their strength. The gray hair or the experience is the splendor of the old." I guess I'm in the splendor of the old now. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today and we thank you for this opportunity that we can gather together and discuss our differences. We thank you. We live in a county, Lord, that allows us to speak, allows us to have a word, allows us to share what we want. We pray for wisdom for our commissioners. Lord, give them common sense and wisdom. We just pray for those that are speaking pro and against, Lord, that your love will abound. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. So, we're going to call this meeting officially to order. And for those that have been here for the first time, we clearly have some procedures and processes that we need to go through. And Mr. Peterson's going to explain that to you as we go forward. And we're going to take our time to make sure that everyone's comfortable wherever at and where we're going. So, John, if you would, take us through our process, our procedures, and then on to the consent cases.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify that they are here so that they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward and be sworn in so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process and there's not a process to reserve your time. So, convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board of Commissioners will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may request one or more of the speakers to come back to the podium for additional information. After that, the Board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. Today's agenda is divided up into five sections. The first part of the agenda is called the Consent Agenda, and these are cases which generally don't have any public opposition and which generally meet the future landuse map and the Cobb County Code. The second part of the agenda are the Continued Cases. These are cases that the Board continue without a hearing so they can acquire more information. The third part of the agenda are the Regular Cases, and these are cases that were heard by the Planning Commission but were not put on the Consent Agenda because there's issues that need to be heard by the Board. Third part are the Hold Cases. These are cases in which there was a hearing held but the Board held it after the hearing in order to get more information about the case. And the fifth part of the agenda is the Other Business Agenda. These are cases that the Board has previously approved but need to come back to be amended for site plans or stipulations. There are three cases on today's agenda which have been withdrawn and would not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-50, Georgia Kids Project LLC. That case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-71, CCL Associates LLC. That case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. And lastly, LUP-31, Wendy L. Colbert. That case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have continued or held that will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-2, Isaacson Living Communities LLC. That case was continued and will be heard in the November zoning cycle. Res zoning case Z-54, Belmont Associates LLC. That case was continued by the staff and will be heard in the November zoning cycle. Quayar Auto Repair. That case was continued by the staff and will be heard in the November zoning cycle. Res zoning case Z-66, Sherry Finch. That case was held by the Planning Commission and will be heard next month. Res zoning case Z-73, Venture Homes Incorporated. That case was continued by the Planning Commission and will be heard next month. Res zoning case Z-76, Venture Homes Incorporated. That case was also continued by the Planning Commission and will be heard in the November zoning cycle. SLEP-14, Municipal Communications LLC. That case was continued by the staff and will not be heard until the December zoning cycle. SLEP-19, West Cobb Sports Complex. That case was held by the Planning Commission until the December zoning cycle. Will not be heard today. Additionally, Other Business Number 35, North Atlanta Soccer Association. That case was continued by the staff and will not be heard today. Other Business Number 64, DNA Investment Group LLC. That case was continued by the staff and will not be heard today. Is the applicant here for rezoning case Z-48, David Pearson Communities Incorporated? The applicant is here, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and they are requesting a 30-day continuance on this to continue working with the neighbors.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to continue this till the November zoning cycle.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners.
Additionally, rezoning case Z-75, Fulte Home Corporation. They've requested a continuance to continue working with the neighbors, Mr. Chairman. So, we would need a vote on that to continue that.
Motion to continue Z-75.
There's a motion to continue Z-75, a second, and call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I would like to inform the Board and the audience that one case on the Consent Agenda is going to be removed by the staff. That's LUP-32, James Larry Barmore. That case has been removed from the Consent Agenda and will be heard in its normal order. I would like to ask people in today's audience to please turn your cellphones off or put them on silent mode. The cellphones do interfere with the broadcasting presentations, so please put your cellphones on silent mode. Additionally, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, there's a request for three early headcounts. Can I get a show of people here by hand who are opposed to rezoning case Z-46? Please keep your hands raised. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed rezoning case Z-61, Capital City View Homes LLC? Please raise your hands. Keep them raised. Let the record show there are 16 people here opposed rezoning case Z-61. And lastly, can I get a show of people here who are opposed to LUP-32, James Larry Barmore? Please raise your hands and keep them raised. Let the record show there are 11 people here opposed to LUP-32, and that completes the cases that have requested early headcounts. I do want to remind the opposition that they do need to leave one or two people here to make a presentation when the cases are called. And with that, Mr. Chairman, ready to start the Consent Agenda?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, there's one more request for an early headcount.
Sure.
Can I get a show of people here who are opposed rezoning case Z-56, Brooks Chadwick LLC? Mr. Chairman, ready to start the Consent Agenda?
Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for October 21st, 2014. Rezoning case Z-64, Rio Thai Pham. Request rezoning from G.C. to O.N.I. for the purpose of a clinic and professional offices in Land Lot 993 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Anderson Mill Road, west of Austell Road. The Planning Commission recommended deletion of the rezoning to the LRO zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on July 7th, 2014, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Site plan to meet all parking requirements. Final landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist with a 20-foot landscape buffer to be added along the north property line where possible. Allowance of clinic use. Parking to be repaved and striped. Parking plan to be submitted to and approved by the zoning division manager. Fence along Anderson Mill Road to be removed. No fencing to be in front of the building line. Remove or repair of the fencing along the other property lines. Remove the pole of the old pole sign. Repair defective steps, gutters, fascias, eaves, and other exterior items. Repaint the building using colors approved by the district commissioner. Landscape plan to be submitted for approval by the county arborist with final approval by the district commissioner. Landscape plan to include required county landscape enhancements, strip buffers, and landscaping around the building. District commissioner to approve minor modifications except those that increase the overall square footage. Cause reduction in the size of an approved buffer adjacent to properties with the same or more restrictive zoning. Cause relocation of a structure closer to the property line of an adjacent property that is zoned in the same or more restrictive zoning district. Increases the height of a building or changes the access location to a different roadway. Fire department comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-64? Let the record show there's no one opposed?
Question, John. Where the app? Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm well. How about yourself, Mr. Chairman and other Commissioners?
Good, thank you. In speaking with the Planning Commissioner for District 4, it was unclear to me if it was discussed that the use be limited to clinical use only or that it be broadened to clinical use only. Was the clinical use the only contemplated use for the site?
No, no, Commissioner. We were contemplating any allowable use for that space. We haven't found a tenant yet. We bought it after it was vacated.
Okay.
So, what we would request is that it not be limited to only clinical use. The one that is occupied now, which is not being subject to the grandfathering law, is a clinical use.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that comment, I mean, one of the Planning Commissioner's recommendation was allow allowance of clinical use, but that's not precluding use on another LRO.
Correct.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner.
Hey, rezoning case Z-67, Mount Harmony Baptist Church Incorporated. Request rezoning from R-20 and R-15 to G.C. for the purpose of a church with an electronic reader board sign in Land Lots 47 and 48 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Pebblebrook Road. Planning Commission recommends deletion of the rezoning to the LRO zoning district subject to allowance of variances as listed in the zoning comments. Sign rendering received by the zoning division dated August 6th, 2014. Property to be used for church and church-related uses only. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-67? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-68, Garrison Oaks Homeowners Association. Request rezoning from R-15 to R-15 with stipulations for the purpose of addition to a recreation area in Land Lot 33 of the 1st District and Land Lot 253 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Defender Way and on the west side of Mayberry Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of the rezoning to the PRZ zoning district subject to landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-68? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-70, Dollbag Singh. Request rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of three single-family lots in Land Lot 780 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Walter Road and Plainview Drive, west of Canton Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning to the R-15 zoning district subject to the following conditions. Revised site plan received by the zoning division on August 11th, 2014. Single-family residential use only. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-70? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-74, Target Corporation. Request rezoning from CRC to CRC with stipulations for the purpose of a restaurant with drive-through in Land Lot 387 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Schallford Road, east of Sandy Plains Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of rezoning to the CRC zoning district for the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on August 7th, 2014, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions for Mr. John Moore dated October 1st, 2014. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-74? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-77, Kevin Cassibier, Care of Shamrock Shell LLC. Request rezoning from NS and R-20 to NRC for the purpose of a restaurant with drive-through in Land Lots 338 and 339 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Schallford Road and Tricam Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of rezoning to the NRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division August 13th, 2014, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. District commissioner to approve the building, the final building architecture. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-77? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Excuse me, John. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is in the stormwater management comments, but number two reads that this site was previously a gas station and a convenience store. And I'd like to add, to make sure that this is stipulated, that verification of proper removal and closure of the underground fuel storage tanks will be required.
Yes, ma'am.
As revised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into land use permits on the Consent Agenda. LUP-33, Rose Catherine. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of allowing more adults than permitted by code in Land Lot 1244 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Hazelwood Drive, west of Yancey Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following condition. All previous conditions from SLUP 14 to 2013 to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-33? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the Consent Agenda. SLEP-20, Petroleum Realty 5 LLC. Request a special land use permit for the purpose of a freestanding ice and water machine in Land Lots 333, 334, and 37 of the 16th District. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Schallford Road and Gordy Parkway. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Applicant to have architecture of the structure approved by the Architectural Control Committee as outlined in Section 9, Page 10 of the stipulations and conditions of zoning dated December 20th, 1988 from rezoning case Z-223 of 1988. All roof-mounted utility, conditioned air unit, or other mechanical devices to be screened from view from the public right-of-way with complimentary architectural features. Inclusion of a noise abatement feature or device that abates noises or sounds from adjacent residential properties. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-20? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the Consent Agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, just for clarity, LUP-20, or I'm sorry, LUP-32, James Larry Barmore will be moved for an open hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, in a regular case. Very good. Commissioners, you have a revised Consent Agenda. I'll make a motion that we approve the revised Consent Agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. That takes us to, what I'd like to do is the first continued case, which is SLUP-18, and then move from that point to Z-46, which has the greatest number of opposition here. So, let's first hear SLUP-18.
Yes, sir. SLEP-18, Central City Towing. Request a special land use permit for the purpose of an impound lot in Land Lots 309 and 310 of the 18th District. The property is located on the eastern end of Pritchard Industrial Boulevard, east of Mashroom Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-18? Please raise your hands. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-18? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there's no one opposed at the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before this is presented.
Hold it.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Attorney Sams.
Sure, that's fine. Hi, I know you and I have corresponded with respect to this case. I would like to encourage that we hold this case for the next hearing. You and I have been receiving a lot of emails and opposition, and I was under the assumption that there would have been a meeting with the community residents prior to this coming before me today, and I would advise that we do that.
Good morning. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, the law firm of Sams, Mark and Huff and Bailey, and I represent the property owner in connection with this application. Yes, Commissioner, you and I have had some conversations and we've had a number of phone calls. I was unable to coalesce the oppositional forces into a meeting. You know, we've got Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. We have staff's recommendation for approval. It's consistent with the future land use map. We had no opposition at the Planning Commission. We've got no opposition now. And it's interesting because the only people in opposition are the ones that believe that somehow or another we can go through their properties to get to this one, and the only way to get to this one is to go through Douglas County. But if it's the Commissioner's wish, then we'll certainly continue the application, although it seems superfluous.
I would suggest that it be held.
Bring forward a motion, please.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward a motion that we hold this case for the next zoning hearing.
Continue it.
Or to continue it, excuse me.
So, there's a motion, a second by Commissioner Ott. Any comments on the board? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, let's go to Z-46.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-46, JW Homes LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 and R-30 to R-20 O.C. for the purpose of single-family residential subdivision in Land Lots 237, 258, and 259 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Paul Samuel Road, on the east side of Aqua Du Rest Road, at the east in Terminus of Justice Drive, at the east in Terminus of West Point Drive, and at the southern Terminus of Liberty Lane. The applicant is present. Earlier, there were 84 people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
I'd like to take this moment while the Speaker's taking a chance to present that we're going to limit the opposition to 10 minutes. I know 84 folks is a lot of folks, but we need to make sure that your efforts are coordinated so as it does that wishing to speak could do so. So, please, if you would, have that conversation amongst yourselves, and let's limit it 10 minutes. We also, the expectation is we'll have a high level of decorum this morning as we go through this process, and we appreciate everyone's indulgence in that. Mr. Moore, whenever you're ready. Take your time, but whenever you're ready.
Okay. Let's go to the end. Okay. Off. Thanks.
Commissioners. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the property owners and the applicant in this application for rezoning. This property is almost 137 acres. It's actually owned in two tracts, there's two separate tracts, about half each for this property that's located on frontage on Paul Samuel Road, as well as, sure.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you. Again, this is zoning case Z-46. The property is 137 acres. It's located on Paul Samuel Road, as well as Acquah Dewest Road. It's really two tracts of land by two different landowners. As you can see on the screen that they're showing you now, the property is about half and half, about half the property is currently zoned R-30, and about half the property is currently zoned R-20. The request is to rezone the property to R-20 Open Space Community, or OSC, with a total number of homes of 178, which is a reduction two times over. The initial application proposed 195 homes, that was reduced to 183, which was recommended for approval by the planning commission. Then since that time, after further review and study, and taking into consideration certain comments that had been made, and pointed out to us, and working with staff, that was further reduced to 178 homes. I'm going to just highlight the points of this plan for you, and certainly highlight the benefits of having an open space community. Just to orient you, this side is Acquah Dewest Road with the, an access point located here. On the opposite side is Paul Samuel Road, located here, with an access location here. Again, this is a total of 178 homes, and what is dominant on this site plan and in this layout is the large amount of open space, and that is dedicated, preserved, open space, totaling just over 52 acres that will be held on the conservation easement as part of the OSC proposal and OSC design elements. The overall density is right at 1.7 units per acre, which is less than the average density for an R-20 subdivision. In addition, what I want to point out are a couple of other items. Because of the large size of this property, you would not realize, but this is a 40-foot undisturbed buffer along this entire boundary that is in place here, that will also be held in perpetuity as preserved, undisturbed buffer. Please note that that 40-foot undisturbed buffer likewise is consistent and meets, and is exactly the same, undisturbed buffer that is present in the Woodbridge subdivision, which is located here off to our corner there. That's a R-30 OSC that likewise has a 40-foot undisturbed perimeter buffer against adjacent residential, and that's located right here, Woodbridge is. Also, I want to point out a couple of the other features that are helpful as it relates to an OSC or open space community. First, another one is this open space that's designated here at Acquah Dewest Road. You'll note that one of, this has been expanded open space area, and the reason is that there is a prominent historical earthworks located there, which we find in Cobb County in various locations. It's one that would not otherwise be scheduled for preservation, but through the use of an OSC design, we are able to preserve this open space location here, and do so not in an insignificant, but rather a substantial manner. So that can be preserved and really provide for a great entryway into this community. Again, the open space design allows for preservation of all stream buffers, required stream buffers, all floodplain, and additional good land, matter of fact, that can be combined into a consolidated 52-acre green space park. That's the advantage to open space community. That's why I think, while there certainly is disagreement, as you can see from the opposition that is here, I think what is in agreement is that this property should be developed as an open space community. It's the best thing for the property itself, for the surrounding community, and for the protection environmentally as well. And I want to follow up with that, that we were contacted by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They've been contacted by the opposition, matter of fact. They contacted us, and we spoke with them, and I can certainly quote from that conversation, that from their standpoint, the number one thing that can be done that can protect wildlife, that can protect potential endangered species that may be in the area, is development under an open space community guideline, just like Cobb County has. And in fact, she's even noted that Cobb County has some of the best open space community development guidelines and layouts that are out there among various jurisdictions, and that as a result, certainly, they support OSC design here. She's not taking sides, but they support OSC design, which further bolsters and confirms that this property, as an open space community, is the appropriate development style for this property. In addition, we have multitude of stipulations that go along with an open space community, that dedicate this open space, dedicate minimum house sizes, minimum types of houses that are attached, as far as what JW Homes is proposing, which are very consistent with strong values of the homes in the area, and very consistent with homes in West Cobb. There's been some discussion or criticism that this doesn't look like West Cobb. But what is in West Cobb, if you drop a pin anywhere in West Cobb and draw a bigger circle or a smaller circle as you want, what is in West Cobb, and what West Cobb is dominated by, is R-20 and R-30 subdivisions and open space communities, known as planned residential developments, known as conservation subdivisions, known as open space communities, that are throughout West Cobb County, all usually developed at somewhere between or under two units per acre. Predominantly developed somewhere in the 1.7 unit per acre range, some less, some more. What's important here is that, as proposed, at 178 homes, the density is less than the average density of an R-20 subdivision overall. It's not taking advantage of the bonus that would otherwise be allowed under the open space community guidelines to achieve 1.9 units per acre, given the amount of open space that's proposed here. So that's not the case here. This applicant, this developer, JW Homes, has chosen not to seek even the bonus that's allowed under the open space community guidelines. With West Cobb, it's predominated again by great subdivisions, most of which, and a lot of which, have utilized some form of open space community design whereby we protect permanently open space. And staff noted that over and over and over again in its detailed analysis. The quote, "straight zoning plan" that was prepared, showing how this property could be developed under its current R-20 and R-30 zoning classification, was reviewed extensively by staff. Staff reviewed it, and we proposed a plan whereby you could develop this property for 177 lots, without zoning, without buffers, without conditions, without stipulations, and without permanently dedicated preservation of 50, over 50 acres of open space. The fact is that this, as an open space community, is the right way to develop this property. I don't think there's really disagreement about that. I think where the disagreement comes in is simply the number of homes. But open space communities cost more to develop, they cost more to maintain, and they cost more going forward. That's why there's a bonus element. It's not being taken advantage of here, but regardless, the applicant, the developer, and the property owner should not be in a situation where they have to give up density in order to have an open space community. And in this situation, this is responsible development. It is responsible development that looks like West Cobb. Woodbridge subdivision, which is adjacent to us, and which a large amount of opposition is generated from, is zoned R-30 Open Space Community at over one and a half units per acre, and that's an R-30 OSC. So we do look like West Cobb. This is West Cobb, and that's why West Cobb is a great place to live, because it has such large open space communities that are available. With that, we're here to answer any questions you may have. I know there's a gentleman, I wanted to have some time, that wanted to actually speak in favor of this, and so I want to have him come up and say his piece as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, please be mindful of the clock in front of you, okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm William Latham. I'm speaking this morning on behalf of several local historical preservationists. Our concerns are limited to the preservation of the identified historic Civil War earthworks on this development. We want to express our deep appreciation to the developers for the buffer and open space currently provided for on three sides of the earthworks. However, we believe the close proximity of homes that would be built on lots 77 and 78 would be a serious detriment to both the visual appeal and the historic setting of the earthworks. To enhance the preservation of the Civil War earthworks, we are recommending that lots 77 and 78 be converted to a combination of open space and parking for up to two vehicles. We believe this would greatly improve the appearance of the earthworks by keeping them in a more natural setting, allow room for students and visitors to safely park when they visit the site, allow a historic marker to be placed at a point where it can be conveniently and safely viewed, and also enhance the green space included in the development. To prevent unintended erosion of the earthworks from foot traffic, we would also suggest a split rail fence and appropriate signs be placed around the site, asking the public not to climb or walk on the earthworks. We believe the adoption of our recommendations will be of benefit to all residents of Cobb County, our students, and most importantly, help preserve in the best possible way a tangible and visible part of our common heritage for future generations.
Thank you, sir. We'll now hear from opposition. I'd like to remind you, there's 10 minutes. First speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Gambrell. I'm president of People Looking After Neighborhoods. While opposition to this application has and continues to be significant, the procedural handling of this case raises many questions regarding the validity of the entire rezoning process. The case was held at the request of the applicant in July, then held again after the PC hearing in August. Upon approval by the PC in September, and within hours of this decision, opposition was told that the Board of Commissioners was placing a hold on the case until the October hearing. However, the BOC was not in session to discuss or to take a vote to hold this particular case. The following day, a memo was issued stating it was a hold by staff. On October 10th, John Peterson sent an email addressing concerns raised by opposition. These responses again raise new questions on current procedures and evaluation of an application to county code. In the letter 1A, he states that a letter was sent to the BOE, however, there was not a copy in the file for documentation. 1D, quote, "It is important to note that most of this project's drainage actually drains back to the project property," end quote. If water backflows into the projects, onto the property, then how can the county impose the, I'm sorry, how can the county not impose the maximum setback requirements for properties adjacent to floodplains and wetlands? This statement also questions the validity of the justification and density changes addressed in item number two. 2B, quote, "And the 25-foot county stream buffer may be varied administratively, as long as there is compensation for the reduction on the property," end quote. Administrative variances should not be used to help achieve a certain density. The property should be evaluated to code, not exceptions to it. It is then stated, quote, "The pond on the property can be drained, if desired by the property owner," end quote. Per number 1D, if water cannot flow from the parcel, how can the county permit the applicant to drain the pond? Draining the pond places an additional burden on upstream property owners with lakes and potential unknown flooding risk. The burden should not fall upon adjacent homeowners for the applicant to benefit. Staff identified 20 or 21 lots that would be extremely difficult and very expensive to build on. It is noted that these lots are encumbered by stream buffers, impervious buffers, and floodplain, yet they all can be varied administratively to some degree. Administrative variances should not be used to help achieve a certain density. The property should be evaluated to code, not exceptions to it. In 1C, staff also found that some of the lots may not have the requisite amount of required road frontage, but with private roads, this is not an issue, since none of the lots are required to have public road frontage. Is this application being built with stipulations that the roads are privately owned? If OSC is to have public roads, then the applicant's site plan does not meet current code requirements. While not addressed in the October 10th letter, the site plan that was presented on September 4th and today, had the existing home adjacent to the lake shaded green, indicating green space. This brings forth the question if the acreage provided for green space has been calculated correctly. The property line disputes with parcels adjacent to West Point have not been resolved. While we appreciate the county's efforts and staff's effort put forth to review all this information, we ask this application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Kyle Williams. I'm a dirt lawyer. I represent 36 individuals that are your neighbors. I represent West Cobb. We hand-delivered an email to you yesterday, our notice of objection in constitutional preservation of rights and opposition of this rezoning application. Mr. Moore, my friend, and I, we agree OSC is a good zoning classification and a good zoning overlay, but for it to be successful and for it to work, you have to abide by the intent and the purpose of that code, that it is to preserve green space, shift densities, but, most importantly, not significantly increase those densities. The math matters here. How we calculate the underlying zoning density matters, and that matters because this property is unique. You can see it on the screen, the unique environmental, the streams here that run through this property. The calculation of the underlying zoning density must be known, and we don't really know that. We don't have a reliable number yet. It must take into consideration the setbacks, the buildable areas, the buffers, the floodplains, the streams, and the historical areas, and there are no reliable calculations before you. And without that, it is our opinion and our position that you cannot make a reliable, justified decision on that, and we ask for you to reject this rezoning application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please go forward, sir.
Yes, my name's Scott Allen. I live on Paul Samuel Road, directly across from the proposed project. During the planning commission hearings, we submitted a number of petitions from our neighbors recommending denial of this zone change. We had over 600 signatures from several hundred homes, and virtually close to 100% of all the neighbors surrounding this property want you to deny this zone change and keep the zoning the same. The reason is, my wife and I personally interviewed about 30 to 40 of these homes, and everyone said, including the kids on their doorstep, this is going to be a traffic nightmare. Right now, there's already gridlock during the rush hour without this subdivision even being there, and it's virtually going to double the amount of traffic during rush hour, and everyone's very upset about that. Also, everyone said, what about the schools? So you should take that in mind when considering this, and I believe, this is right, this looks a lot like West Cobb, but we, the citizens, are letting you know that R-20, R-30 already has gridlock on the roads during rush hour now. All of us that came here from this neighborhood today, it took us 30 to 45 minutes, depending on which way you came, to come to this meeting. Something needs to change in West Cobb. It's half-built out, you have an opportunity to change and reduce the homes, fix the rush hour, and make sure our school kids are not in trailers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other speakers? Are there any other speakers?
My name is Melissa O'Brien. I represent many parents in West Cobb. We're very concerned about the two elementary schools in particular, Dewest Elementary and Bullard Elementary School. Dewest Elementary School is currently at capacity, Bullard Elementary is not far behind. We appeared before Cobb County School District and told them that their tenure projection is actually a one-year projection. It goes until about 2015, where it states that all building in West Cobb stops. We know that that's not a reality. We know the building will continue. We've been told time and time again that it is not in your hands, that that is a school issue, but it is in your hands, because you're determining zoning here today. You're determining how many homes can be built in a particular area. We're imploring you. We're imploring you to not put these children in trailers. It makes a difference in the lives of these students. It makes a difference in the lives of teachers. It makes a difference in families' lives. It makes a difference in the lives of communities. We're asking for a reasonable compromise to this situation. We understand that homeowners have a right to develop property, but we also understand that the surrounding community has a right in which to live in a community that exists with compromise, that exists in a framework where traffic is reasonable, where school situations are under control, and we're asking you to look at a reasonable compromise where you're looking at a situation where there's not a take for a homeowner, but there's also not a give for a developer to make money that is not necessary at the expense of, at the expense of the community. Please consider these children, consider the fact that they will be in trailers, that they will lose classrooms, that they will lose their computer lab, which you've already lost, because of development that has gone out of control. You have that ability in your hands to change that situation. We urge you to reconsider. We urge you to vote no today and to go back to the drawing board with this developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? It's 15. Seeing and hearing done, a public hearing is closed. Commissioner Gorm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been good, healthy discussion and debate since this case was held after the Planning Commission had heard the case, and I want to thank everyone who has participated in this process, whether it was in person. I know I spent about four and a half hours one-on-one with representatives from the community, whether it was via email contacts or even on Facebook. But first, what I'd like to do is highlight the facts of this case that have stayed constant throughout the entire process. The plan, if we could put the plan, the present plan, on the, on the screen, please. The OSC plan that we have before us is consistent with the purpose and the intent of the OSC ordinance, which is to protect our natural resources and our historic sites. And OSC is, and I think the opposition has said, that OSC is the perfect way to look at this very challenging, environmentally challenging piece of property. OSC clusters homes to take them off of the environmentally sensitive areas, which you will see the clusters of homes. It maintains the character of the surrounding area, which, if you were to drive by the roadway of this proposed development, will appear like any other development in that area. As a matter of fact, it would probably appear less dense than other developments in that particular area because there's a lot of green space at the entranceway. But most importantly about this OSC concept is it protects a source, one half, one half of our drinking water comes from Lake Alatuna. On this parcel is Dewest Creek, which feeds into Alatuna Tributary, which then feeds directly into Lake Alatuna. And what we are doing today and what we will consider by vote is the protection of our drinking water, one half of it, by allowing for a smart OSC plan. Another constant that we need to look at is that there, with this plan, there's 52 acres of green space that is being preserved, 52 acres. I know we have a lot of people out there that are concerned about wildlife and about green space, about native plants. This is one way to address that. This plan protects some Civil War trenches. As Mr. Latham came up here and had some concerns, his concerns are being addressed by this plan and also will be concerned by our historic preservation specialists here in Cobb County. This plan addresses resulting traffic that's going to filter out onto Acworth and Paul Samuel Roads. What it does is provide a dedicated left-hand turn lane into both entrances on Paul Samuel and Acworth-Dewest, which will allow for the free-flowing of traffic in that area. Without this plan, those dedicated left-hand turn lanes would not be available. Mr. Moore, if you can come back to this plan, please. Throughout the course of discussion that we've had with the public, and the one thing that hasn't stayed constant has been a number of homes, which has changed throughout the course of this process, from a high of 190 down to 183, now down to 178. There's been a lot of discussion between me and the community regarding the number of homes and how we can approach this and have a reasonable compromise, as was asked. I've received communications from representatives of the community who have stated in one of their communications that accordingly, the OSC density allowed by the BOC for this property should be at least 152 lots and no more than 167 lots with an OSC bonus if about 40% open space is set aside. That's been a constant with the opponents. What we have right now is a proposal for 178 lots. The community appears to embrace 167 lots, which is a difference of 11 homes, 11 lots at this point. I have an additional request of the applicant, and I would like to see if we can zone in and on our screens, we don't have the open space concept. I still have an issue up in the upper-left-hand corner cluster where the proposed new homes border against the row of existing homes. I still have an issue with the, those backyards backing up with the existing properties. I would like to see a home removed from that area up in there. I would like to see a home removed down in the lower right-hand corner, a home at least removed in that area there, and additionally, down in the lower left-hand corner, the possibility of having a home removed there or up in the upper-right-hand corner. So what I'm saying is, I would like to see 175 homes as a maximum here, which is a difference of eight homes between what I have been told by the constituents out in that area is an acceptable plan to them. But also, I need to point out the fact that this is a request for an R-20 OSC. Half of the property is already zoned R-20, half of it is zoned R-30, so the difference that's coming is with the R-30 property. If this plan were to be zoned and redone as a full R-20 OSC, the base units per acre could be 1.75 without the bonus. What's being presented right now is 1.70, which is below the base that a typical R-20 OSC can come in at. Then, considering the almost 40 acres of open space, which is 38.5 acres, this proposal could have a units per acre of 1.92 units per acre. It is coming in at 1.70 and maybe a tad below that if indeed we remove the three homes. I do believe that this is a reasonable compromise. I believe it's in the best interest of the citizens of this area of Cobb County, but more importantly, it's in the best interest of all the citizens of Cobb County, since through this plan, we are able to protect our drinking water source for Cobb County. And we know by experience that if we allowed a straight plan to take place, and there's been a lot of discussion about whether it's 176, whether it's 156, whether the community says it's 167 on a straight plan, that if we do that and we divide up all the stream buffers and make them parts of people's backyards, that stream buffer will be mowed, will be fertilized, will have swing sets in it, will have barbecue pits, and we will not be able to police that effectively and preserve our drinking water source. Reasonable compromise, I think this is more than a reasonable compromise. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we delete this zoning from R-20 to R-30 to R-20 OSC to include the site plan that's being presented in. Kevin, is that dated 10, 10-13? What was that?
It's last revised, 10-13.
10-13. However, once the three homes are removed from the plan, I want the entire plan to come back to this board at other business for approval in a public forum. To include your letter dated 10-20, letter of stipulations with some changes to be made, and one is point three, that there will be a maximum of 175 homes for this, for this Number 11, I just want the addition of some verbiage in there. Kevin, I would like to see that when we discuss, "The mandatory homeowner shall be responsible for upkeep and maintenance of all common areas," I also want to include, including the lake and the dam, because that will be an amenity to this, to this community, and those individuals who purchase those properties need to be aware that not only are they maintaining the open space, the landscaping around the detention areas, the entranceways, but they also will be obligated to maintain a lake and a dam. Applicant agrees the establishment of perimeter buffers. Kevin, would you confirm that those are 40-foot natural buffers on the, on the perimeters?
The, the buffer on the right-hand side of the plan, which would be the eastern portion of the property.
Yes.
That is confirmed as a 40-foot buffer. It changes when you get to the south side. That is not a 40-foot buffer, but there is a specific buffer in agreement with that owner.
Is that the CERC or the Godwin?
That's the CERC, yes.
Okay, so we've taken care of that with stipulations.
Right, this is a specific agreement with them on, on that, and that's set out in the letter.
Okay. My motion also includes all Planning Commission comments and recommendations, all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
As revised.
And as revised.
It's a motion by Commissioner Gorm and a second by Commissioner Ott. Is there any other discussion by the board? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, folks, for being here today. I'm going to take a two-minute break while we clear the room, and we're going to move on to Z-56.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. If we could ask the audience to please take a seat. I appreciate your cooperation. We have just completed Z-46. We are now going to move on to Z-56 to try to accommodate the folks that were here today. So let's go to Z-56.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The zoning case Z-56, Brooks Chadwick LLC, request rezoning from R-30 to R-8 for the purpose of townhouses and landlots 468 and 469 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Schallerford Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road. Earlier, there were, there were 79 people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Again, I'd like to remind you that we're going to limit opposition to 10 minutes. Please coordinate your time appropriately. Mr. Moore, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner, Mr. Clary, and the applicant, Brooks Chadwick, in this rezoning application to rezone approximately 13.7 acres from its existing category of R-30 to the proposed category as advertised of RM8 for a townhome community located at the intersection of Schallerford Road and Childers Road, just east of the intersection of Schallerford Road and Johnson Ferry Road in northeast Cobb County. There's been a lot of discussion regarding this and surrounding this application. We had a town hall meeting last week, in which many of those that are in attendance here tonight were at that meeting as well. The application began as a application earlier this year for a combination of retail and residential uses, retail and townhome uses. We began our discussions with adjacent neighbors at that point, who were adamant that this property not contain the retail component. If you're looking at your board now, it's a perfect screen for this. What you'll see to this property is to the east and south, R-20 and R-15 subdivisions. What you'll see to the west and north is NRC, Public Shopping Center, PSC, Kroger Shopping Center located there. You have continued CRC, Walmart. You have very intense neighborhood retail uses at the intersection of Schallerford and Johnson Ferry, as there should be. Then you have this piece of property, this 13.7 acres that has been there for quite a long time and owned by Mr. Clary for quite a long time. The proposal in this piece of property is therefore an ideal piece of property for a transition land use. The adjacent neighbors, however, did not want that transitional land use to include retail. So then this became a modified version of that plan and removed the retail component and was proposed for 96 townhomes. Since that time and since the planning commission meeting, it has been further reduced down to a total of 82 townhome units. And that's important because it's not only a reduction of 14 units, but it's also an increase in the green space, open space amenity area and the location of that amenity area. And I want to turn to that real quickly. Because it does have an impact on the land planning. This is the revised plan that was submitted, a total of 82 homes with Schallerford Road located at the top and Childers Road intersection here where we've aligned. What we were able to do is increase the green space area in this location and relocate the proposed amenity further interior, overall increasing the overall amenity, green space, open space area to almost six acres or approximately six acres. But what it did was allow us also to reduce the total number of homes here to eight, as well as reorient how the townhome proposal and homes' locations would be so that the adjacent neighbors here in Breckenridge subdivision, as well as in Mountain Creek, these adjacent homes are impacted even less by this proposal. We have reached a number of agreements and found a great deal of strong support from these adjacent neighbors throughout this process. That's not shown in the numbers reflected here, but it's shown in the stipulations and it's shown, I know in communications, that the board has received and the staff has received from these adjacent neighbors as it relates to the support for this 82-home townhome plan. Again, the transitional land use of this piece of property is one that cannot be overstated. Protection of Breckenridge, protection of Mountain Creek subdivisions to our south and to our east is paramount. Protection of those adjacent neighbors is paramount. That's why we've worked so closely with them. And by having the proposal as proposed, what we've been able to do is move any, is move the development and slide it towards the retail side. As a townhome development, it's appropriate as that transitional land use, one that would be expected, however, one that would be expected by the potential home buyer. The target market here is one of very much empty nesters or very young professionals. To, to make sure that that's the case, we have agreed with our adjacent neighbors to limit the height of the townhomes to two stories, thereby further making this more acceptable to that target market, which again also addresses issues as it relates to school impact. This is not an R-15 proposal or an RA5 proposal, single-family homes, that would be attractive to young families with children or families with children. This is being built and designed for its intended target audience, and that is empty nesters and young professionals, so that that impact can be mitigated across the board. In addition, the other big concern has been traffic along Schallerford Road and specifically at this intersection of Childers Road. We studied that with DOT. We looked at that with DOT, and Commissioner Burl came out with DOT and looked at that and walked the property and saw the traffic, traffic that has been described to us, and certainly it's there. We have committed to DOT to certain traffic improvements that is part of most typical rezoning applications, to provide for the additional turn lanes into our project and to provide for the additional deceleration lanes into our project and to upgrade that signal so that it can be a four-way signal at Childers and Schallerford Road. But what's not being addressed through the application to date have been additional system improvements, not on our side of the property and not typically required, additional system and road improvements to improve Schallerford Road and its intersection with Childers Road, above and beyond what would ever be required of an applicant. But in looking at this and hearing the opposition, what we have committed to at this point in time and what if the commissioners see it fit to approve this application, we would want as a condition of the application is that Brooks Chadwick is agreeing to put an up an additional and maximum of, and up to $150,000 specifically for system intersection improvements at Schallerford Road and Childers Road that would include potentially straight-through pass lanes, additional lanes and turn lanes to improve the traffic flow at this intersection, which would not be able to provide through any other development or any other use of this property and certainly is not within any project list that DOT has, even splopped or otherwise. That's an off-property, off-site system improvement that this developer and applicant is willing to do above and beyond the requirements of DOT today. I think that can't be overstated as it relates to helping not just this project, but what it does is help this community in their number one concern, which is traffic impact at an intersection, which this, these are real dollars that can really go to DOT and can really be provided to improve this intersection in a meaningful and tangible way. And I don't believe that can be overstated whatsoever. Just like it cannot be overstated that we have the support of these adjacent neighbors who we work so very hard with to address their concerns, they've been so very courteous, professional, but stern and stubborn with their insistence that we address their concerns, which we have done and which Brooks Chadwick has done. Likewise, we have obtained the support of East Cobb Civic Association, who has sent their letter, not just of no opposition, but of support for this project. So even though you have opposition, in this instance, you also have what is very strong support from a variety of different avenues and from different directions. Both East Cobb Civic Association and your adjacent neighbors support this project, and we believe that that is, cannot again be overstated as it relates to this project. We have a stipulation letter dated October 15th and a supplemental one dated October 17th that include these agreements with adjacent neighbors and then include these stipulations and commitments. It just doesn't include the commitment as it relates to the road improvements. I'm going to save the additional time for speakers who want to speak in favor of this application that have made that known to me this morning.
Thank you. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Please come forward as quickly as possible.
Commissioners and Chairman, my name is Stephanie Teach. I'm a resident of the Breckenridge subdivision, which adjoins this property. I did meet with the developer and the East Cobb Civic Association, and then we had two neighbor, two meetings with our neighbors to explain the proposal. They, I came back with the developer and showed them the wishes that my neighbors wanted. They wanted it gated, they wanted to remove the retail, and they wanted to limit their rentals, which the developer has agreed to. Any other neighbors who wanted to meet with the developer could do so, and they have met with them. I know that there are people here who object, some of which are my neighbors. The opposition has a loud voice. I've listened to their reasons, and I don't agree with some of them. First, the school overcrowding is not an issue because our school board has stated that the schools are not overcrowded. They're the experts on the matter, we are not. I've lived in the area for over 20 years. Schools had much higher numbers than they have right now. They may have to rearrange the classrooms, but the schools are not overcrowded. The stream issue was addressed during last week's meeting, and it was clear from the Cobb County Stormwater Representative that attended that this property is not the one that's causing the most runoff in some of the neighboring communities in Mountain Creek and East Spring Lake. That's a horrible issue that they have, but this property isn't affecting that. That leaves the two issues that myself and my neighbors did question. And one, the biggest one, is the Cobb, is the traffic issue. It's a horrible traffic issue right now, and Cobb DOT needs to fix it, no matter what goes in there, and something's going to go in there. So the next thing it leaves is the density, and yes, it's dense. The answer for some is that this is already zoned at R-30, so you should leave it. But if, using that train of thought, you would never have anybody come up in front of you and ask for rezoning. So I don't think that's a valid concern. Breckenridge was developed over 25 years ago at, like, Mountain Creek and Chimney Lakes. The land was a bit more available and cheaper, and homes could be built at a reasonable price. My home is directly behind Walmart. It's a comfortable home, but it's not a luxury home. And Walmart is not a 24-hour store, it has no truck traffic in the back, and the trash is on the side of the building, not along residential properties. If you approve this property as a, as a single-family detached residence, then you are going to add schoolchildren to this. And if their argument is correct about the schools being overcrowded, then you're going to have more, more children in the schools. The biggest concerns that our neighbors have had is that changing it to retail or commercial is unacceptable to anybody. So I hope you keep that in mind. The last thing, the fact of the matter, the seller of this property has held on to it and wants to sell when large tracts of land in East Cobb are scarce. The comments have been made that he's greedy. I don't think he's greedy. I think he was brilliant to hold on to it that long. The cost to develop and then to build would make single-family homes too expensive, and the opponents want him to lower his price, but I'm not sure they would lower the price of their homes. Add to this that the real estate agents in the area have stated time and time again that there are not enough places for empty nesters to live in Cobb County, so they are moving to Fulton and Cherokee. This is a place where many of us who have lived for a long time want to stay, want to, want to be near friends and family. I think building the townhomes is, is the best transition between the commercial 24-hour Kroger with the delivery trucks next to this property and the Publix across the street and residential. I support the application and have spoken with several of my neighbors, and they also support the application.
Thank you. Ms. Trish.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am Trish Steiner, East Cobb Board of Director and Case Manager for Z-56. We've had meetings with the contiguous neighbors who have all asked that the commercial components of this project be removed, thus removing, removing additional traffic. These residents support this residential use. They are the individuals who will be impacted daily, not only by traffic, but noise, light, and the view shed from their property. They have the most to lose in their property value and their quality of life. The developer agreed to put only eight townhomes against Mountain Creek and Breckenridge, making this the lowest density on the property at 3.47 units per acre. These are six acres of green space. This acreage includes the common area, the amenity area and green space. The majority of this area is against the two subdivisions with a pull move towards Kroger. This, along with the additional plantings and fencing stipulated by the applicant, provide for more than adequate screening of the neighborhood from the contiguous neighbors. Landscaping on the front of this property, along with the natural downward slope of the land, will provide screening along Schallerford Road. The target market for these townhomes will be the young professionals, the empty nesters, and the single individuals who want to live in a safe neighborhood but who prefer not to have to maintain their yards. By making the townhomes two-story with no basements, it will help limit the size of families that will be attracted to this project while providing the schools with tax revenue. We believe this development of 82 townhomes with six acres of green space will benefit the community by providing acceptable transition from low-density residential to commercial that is supported by contiguous neighbors. Please vote to approve Z-56. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comment for the applicant. We did go over time, but we're going to award that time to the, that extra, extra time to the opposition. So we'll hear from opposition at this point. Please come forward.
My name is Darlene Powell, and I am literally speaking for over 1,000 concerned citizens that live in East Cobb County. We are against zoning application Z-56 for the following reasons. First, this rezoning application is not consistent with the character of the surrounding community. The surrounding area is and has been detached single-family homes for over 40 years. The existing R-30 zoning and Cobb County Comprehensive Plan are an implied agreement between the county and the homeowners, who use that information to purchase homes in the area. We are especially fearful that by allowing high-density zoning in an area where no high-density exists, an undesirable precedent will be set for other builders to buy either vacant land, such as the Maddox property behind the BP, or to tear down properties to squeeze as many high-density dwellings into the area as they can get away with. Mr. Moore's comparison in previous meetings of this proposal to similar developments near Lower Roswell Road is flawed. The Lower Roswell Road area already has a more variable mix of zoning. It has wider, multiple-lane roads. It is much closer to the interstate highway and is over six miles away from this community. In short, we are not Lower Roswell Road, nor do we want to become a Lower Roswell Road, and this proposal does not look like East Cobb. The developer asserts that detached, single-family dwellings will not sell behind a shopping center, but looking at an aerial, aerial views of the surrounding area with the picture shown, there are a number of neighborhoods that demonstrate that detached, single-family homes will sell and thrive beside the, the commercial property. Breckenridge behind Walmart is one of them, where three of those houses directly behind Walmart have sold in the past two years. And another one is Chimney Lakes behind Publix. These are just two examples where you can put single-family homes and the neighborhoods will prosper. Homeowners in this area say they moved here because of the reputation of our local schools. We worry that a high-density development of this size will overburden our school system. Already, Tritt Elementary, Hightower Middle School, and Pope High School are over-planned capacity. The applicant's zoning request incorrectly states that Pope High School is underserved. In fact, the principal of Pope High School stated last week that the current Pope enrollment is 1,920 students in a school where the official capacity is only 1,800. is 1,920 students in a school where the official capacity is only 1,827. They are full 93 students over capacity. Class sizes already continue to increase due to budget costs, and we want to know who will pay for the schools to house additional students and where will you build these schools when our community already sits on the edge of East Cobb County? Or worse, will our students have to be bused to other parts of the county? In effort to minimize our concerns about school crowding, the developer claims that these dwellings will be marketed to empty nesters, yet nothing in the application supports this. The application offers no stipulations with respect to age restrictions or ADA compliance or providing masters on the main level or even active adult amenities like tennis courts. Most empty nesters are looking to minimize the number of stairs in their home, not be in townhomes, and elevators were only an option if townhomes were pre-sold. Local realtors will tell you that similar developments like this in the Walton District are typically bought by investors that rent to families that want to send their children to our schools. There is only one example of townhomes in this immediate area, and that example failed miserably. There are 15 townhomes located off of Roswell or Lassiter Road on Loret Court. The builder went bankrupt, and then the stipulations, covenants, and rental regulations all went by the wayside. Those townhomes were auctioned off, and today there are 40 children from just those 15 townhomes that fill up an entire bus that goes to Shaliford Falls Elementary School. This is just one of the many examples where townhome covenants can be broken, and this is why we are against townhomes. Another huge concern is runoff. Large, established subdivisions in the Willow Creek watershed are concerned about the runoff. For example, East Spring Lakes is already dealing with a failing dam that is estimated to cover over $1 million to replace. In the past, East Spring Lake has won damages against Walmart and, most recently, the Cobb County DOT with an award of $35,000 due to work done on Post Oak Tritt several years ago. And in those cases, the developer followed the laws, set up the silt screens, did what they were supposed to do, just as the Brooks Chadwick engineer claims that they will do. But those screens failed, they fell down, and in either case, the company or the county were still liable. Will Brooks Chadwick be held responsible for any damages that exacerbate the failure of that dam? And if not, will our tax dollars be used to pay for it? Lisa Murchow will talk more extensively about traffic, but we're going to put up an example of what Shaliford Road looks like on any weekday. With only one entry and exit point for this high-density housing, traffic will only get worse. Neighborhoods in Mountain Creek, Yorktown, and Westfield are literally trapped in their neighborhoods several times a day. No construction, no construction should be allowed at this site until a viable DOT plan, which fixes the entire intersection, is developed, approved, funded, and executed. In addition, this request is not consistent with a recent rezoning almost across the street on Shaliford, previously application Z-47. At roughly half the size of Z-46, Z-47 was rezoned from R-30 to R-15, low density for just 10 single-family homes. In contrast, Z-56 is roughly twice as large, especially when some, but requesting eight times the number of homes. Why the disparity in the two developments? The asking price for Z-56 property is not consistent with the surrounding properties. The Z-47 property sold in May of 2014 for $750,000, which made it viable for the developer to build single-family detached homes. In contrast, the Z-56 property has a price tag of millions of dollars. The community should not be made to suffer at the expense of an unreasonable property owner and a developer that wants to purchase property significantly above market value. In fact, this community is not opposed to development of the property. We are opposed to unreasonable development. In our petition, we go as far to proposing the current zoning be changed from R-30 to R-15 with stipulations that no more than three detached, single-family homes be built per acre. This is more generous than the density in the recent Z-47 rezoning and is in line with the Planning Commission recommendations. We have offered a reasonable compromise. When I stood in front of the Planning Commission on October 7th, I presented this petition with 338 names opposing this rezoning. Today, just two weeks later, I return with over 1,000 names and counting. They're still being added to the website. The economic interests of one landowner and one developer should not outweigh the economic interests of an entire community. For many people, the purchase of a home will be their largest single investment. This argument comes down to this one landowner trying to maximize his profit at the expense of thousands of other investors who also have a significant investment in this area. And sometime in 2016, the owner of this land and the developer will have made their money and left. We, on the other hand, will have to live with what is left for as long as we reside in the area. Further, the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission meeting, Mrs. Trombetti reiterated all, most of, if not all of my comments that I've made today. She also mentioned that schools and traffic should definitely be taken into consideration in this decision because the school system and DOT did not plan for a medium or high-density development in this area. And I will remind you that the Planning Commission voted unanimously five to zero against this rezoning. When you have thousands of constituents that will be detrimentally affected by this rezoning and your own planning commission recommends five to zero, that this request is not good for the community, the only logical decision that you can make today is to vote against this rezoning. I would also like to remind you that East Cobb has one of the highest percentages of registered voters in the state, and the hundreds of voters on this petition will remember how you represent us today and when we go to the polls on November 4th of this year and the year after that and the year after that. In conclusion, I urge you to vote to preserve the charm and character of this community as well as our quality of life. Vote to protect the implied promises that were made to the homeowners when this land was originally zoned. Say no to this rezoning application. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Murchower. I'm a zoning and land use attorney in Atlanta, and I live in Coventry Green, which is on the east side of Childers at this intersection. I use Childers and Shaliford every day, multiple times a day. I have been hired to represent my neighborhood and our position on this rezoning, and we are concerned about the integrity and the current state of the community and the traffic. That is our main concern. I understand what Mr. Moore said about the traffic, and I would like to tell you about the traffic. The lanes that run along Shaliford currently are not adequate to handle the amount of traffic that uses the intersection now. To add an additional 200 cars that make multiple trips a day will cause much more problem for the existing situation. We retained a traffic engineer who studied the traffic study presented by the developer, and the notes from that traffic engineer are that the traffic study used an old manual, the Highway Capacity Manual 2000 Edition. That manual has been updated and revised. There's a 2010 manual. We don't know why that was not used. And the traffic study presented by the applicant shows heavy traffic at peak hours. At the Johnson Ferry-Shaliford Road intersection, the level of use is an F in the morning and an E in the afternoon peak hours. And at the Childers and Shaliford intersection, the level of service is, in the morning, a C, and in the afternoon, a D. Those are not acceptable at this moment. Fs and Es and Cs and Ds are just not acceptable. To add additional traffic to that situation will make it much more abhorable. The traffic is bad as you turn right, as you try to turn right from Shaliford onto Childers, there is no right turn lane. That needs to be addressed. There must be a turn lane there to move the traffic through the light. The traffic also backs up on the eastbound side of Shaliford at the intersection with Childers. The traffic studies presented by the developer showed that there was a problem as you turned left onto Shaliford heading eastbound, but they did not show the left turn lane that's in, that's currently there. This is a problem. We need to, we need to have a better situation there. The Shaliford Road westbound 75-foot left turn bay that's been proposed by the developer does not appear to meet the Cobb County turn lane standards. If this, if this street is a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit, which I believe it is, with more than 75 lots at the, at the point of turn, the bay should be at least 150 feet of storage bay plus a 50-foot bay taper, and that is not what is being proposed from what we can see. Also, Childers is a main artery to Highway 92. In order to ease that traffic flow that goes, that takes Childers, as I said before, a right-hand turn lane must be added for those vehicles traveling westbound, turning up onto Childers. The traffic study also does not contain a site distance survey. It does not address the grade or the crest of the hill that is in front of the Yorktown subdivision on the east side of Shaliford. It's a significant problem as you enter that intersection. If you want to turn left onto Childers, or if you want to turn right off of Childers, you cannot see the cars as they crest the hill, so you can't gauge the traffic ahead of you. That needs to be fixed. Since Childers is now a main artery to 92, we need all of these problems fixed. The green light facing Childers stays, stays red much too long. The turn lane to go left onto Childers heading eastbound is impossible to maneuver. As you, as you sit at the light, if a Publix truck is turning to get to the loading docks at Publix, they must take a left onto Childers. They will make you move back as you're sitting at the light. You're physically forced to move back to allow the trucks to make the turn. I have seen the trucks go up on the sidewalk as they're making the turn. The right-hand, the right side of the truck's tires do hit sidewalk as they make that turn, and I have physically had to move back on many occasions. If there's cars behind you, you can't do that. It's very difficult. It's a dangerous situation. So the stop bar probably needs to be moved back at that light. And additionally, there needs to be three lanes if this development or any other development goes into this property. There needs to be three lanes coming off of Childers. There needs to be a left turn lane, there needs to be a straight lane going into the development, and there needs to be a right-hand turn lane onto Shaliford that will avoid backup on Childers. We ask you to consider all of these problems and the safety issues that are there. There are so many young high school drivers who use this intersection daily. There are joggers, bicyclists, and walkers who use this intersection and cross Childers and Shaliford on any given time, on any given day, and this is an issue that we have been facing all of these years.
Counsel, if you would please conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. I am concluded.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed on this remark. We thank everyone for their comments. And turn this, turn this case to Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, sir. There has been a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings, a lot of emails, response to this development. It originally started with mixed-use retail and townhome. The developers met with the adjoining neighbors and surrounding neighbors and reduced that to remove the commercial. This is, this is in a residential area now, but it does border and is being encroached by commercial. And I think it's highly important that it remain residential. And I think all of the folks around there agree with that, or, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have been removed on the commercial side. There's also been a lot of meetings and work with adjoining neighbors that back up to the property and on the side of the property that's all residential, Mountain Creek and Breckenridge. And this is a transitional piece for the land use plan, the comp plan. As I said, it is encroached by commercial on the side, the Kroger side, across the street at Publix, and then on the other side of Breckenridge, of course, with the Walmart And last week at the community meeting, we had a revised site plan of the 82 units down from the 96 units that were originally planned. And it also added, which we directed the developers to do, to reduce the number of homes and add some green space. So almost half of this 13 acres now, six acres, five, six acres is green space. And there are only really the eight lots to the east side that border Mountain Creek are, border residential. The amenities have been moved into the middle to, to not be near residential, and the, the bordering neighbors on the east side of Mountain Creek have either written us or verbally given us approval that they are in favor of this, and as was mentioned, I think by ECCA, that the, and Mr. Moore, the eight units on the Breckenridge side are under four units per acre. They're all 3.47. So the density is on the Kroger side, the higher density is on the Kroger side. But I just wanted to address the, the land use and the residential because I know that the Planning Commission recommended five units per acre, RA5. And with this 82-unit plan, we're looking at RA6. It's under six units per acre. And, and they are all the two-story homes, which, you know, is no, really no different than a two-story home as far as the height and, and the visibility from, from the neighbors and, and the frontage. To get to the traffic, I've, I've been out there, walked the property, walked the intersection with DOT, with the developers. It is very congested. I've been out there during the rush hour time as well, not just in the afternoon, early afternoon. Sat out there for a couple of hours and drove up and down for, you know, during that timeframe. And there is backup in front of Yorktown and Westfield. And in addition to what the developer has agreed to do to, to try to relieve and, and work with that area as far as the traffic concerns, in addition to what they've already committed to in designating a left turn lane into their development, a decel lane coming from the Johnson Ferry side, right turn lane into their development. They've also agree, are agreeable to contributing up to $150,000 to alleviate the traffic on Shaliford and Childers. When we walked the property and, and looked at the line of sight and the, the traffic in the area, we came up with a draft plan that will add an additional lane coming from the east toward Johnson Ferry for that, for that flow. And we're also looking at expanding the radius of the right turn onto Childers. So that would give the folks coming up to turn right on Childers a way to cut off and go right and then keep the traffic moving forward on Shaliford. And, you know, the, and I think with DOT's comments and recommendations, we're also, we can also add signs in front of Yorktown and Westfield now before anything is developed to restrict cars from blocking the entrance. You know, I know, and we can also have officers to enforce that as well. You know, and I know, you know, your thoughts are, people aren't going to pay attention, but, you know, we can put that up and hopefully deter some folks from doing that to alleviate the traffic from blocking the entrance and allowing those residents to be able to access their subdivisions and get, get home from work and school. Although legally, we can't restrict the age on these, it was something that I heard and would, would like to recommend, but... Uh, but legally, we, we can't, we can't go there. And, um, but with the size of these townhomes, two-story, minimum two thousand square feet up to thirty-five hundred with, um, you know, option for an elevator. They're, they are targeted more for empty nesters that are downsizing and young, young people not really accommodating to families, which brings in the, the school issue, um, for that. So, um, you know, I, I really think that this is, um, I, I think that this is appropriate for this area.
Hey, hey, excuse me, folks. Decorm, remember? We talked to Decorm. No, sir, I'm not gonna acknowledge you. We talked to Decorm, Decorm, and I appreciate your professionalism in expressing that. Thank you.
And I, I think that, that the concessions that have been made and listening to the residents on the, um, commercial being removed and not wanting commercial to encroach on this area, I, I think that, um, you know, no more than the eighty-two units would be appropriate. And add the stipulation of the additional, um, lanes and traffic concerns that, uh, the developer is willing and agreeable to, um, contribute.
You have a motion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve Z fifty, well, I'm sorry, to delete Z fifty-six from R thirty to RA six. Site plan specific to the site plan attached to the October fifteenth STIP letter from Mr. Moore and the October seventeenth STIP letter, supplemental letter, I'm sorry, from Mr. Moore. With the addition of the up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for traffic improvements in that area. And all other staff comments and planning commission recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Let me, uh, make a comment. Um, and I, you know, it used to be the district that I represented, and I still represent as chair, but, um, I've been involved in this Schallford Road area for a long, long time. And went through a painstaking process, uh, to get the Schallford Road improvements done some time ago. Ms. Jane Strickland is here, uh, from DOT, and I know she remembers that she, her, her oldest child wasn't even born at that time. And we've tried to make improvements as, as things have changed in that community. Ms. Stephanie and I go way back, uh, in terms of the, making the improvements to Walmart and, uh, the remodeling of the adjacent, uh, everything that's going on associated with the adjacent commercials in there. In all truth, this R thirty lot should have probably been considered by, um, our community development for a change in the future land use map sometime, some time ago, um, because it is adjacent to the commercial. At one time, most of this property was farmland. It's, it's moved into a neighborhood community activity center, and it's moved into a very high intense area and, and somewhat of a throughway. I agreed, heading east towards, uh, the Fulton County, uh, business community. Lifestyles are changing. Uh, we do have a good school system and it's very attractive. But there are a lot of folks, and I know this between the Pope and Lassiter and, and, uh, the school districts out in Walton, Civil District, that as folks have kids and they go through the school system and their kids are finished and moving on to the university system, that they want to stay in that community in which they were in for twenty, twenty-five years, but they want to move to a different type of unit. I am one of those people. I'm currently in a market looking for a townhome to downsize as my kids have moved out. It also prevents the opportunity for them to move back, which should strongly be considered by everybody. With that said, um, having a, a, a community like this where you can have a home that's comfortable inside and have an outside which is taken care of, not by me, but by somebody else, and have minimal, um, actually minimal impact on the school system as a result, is an attractive alternative to what some folks are looking for in our community as we age. And having the option for an elevator and a two-story building, if you think about it, uh, we're a grains society, and we're one of which we need to allow, I think, an opportunity for folks to stay in their community who have spent twenty to twenty-five years here contributing successfully, both to the school system's success and to our community's success. I, I agree wholeheartedly that, uh, this is a good transition from commercial, intense commercial down to the residential. And I appreciate all the efforts everyone has put into evaluating this process. Um, I do agree that Schallford continues to be a problem, as does the intersection. So my commitment to the community at this point is that as we evaluate, as DOT evaluates what should be done here, there are certain requirements of the developer that are gonna be, um, made as a result of this zoning, um, comment by DOT. This developer has made a commitment up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for additional improvements. I'm making a commitment that we will bring forward whatever funding necessary to make this right the first time and the last time. If we're gonna go into this intersection and we're gonna make improvements, I don't wanna go eighty percent because the funding wasn't there, only to have to come back in some time in the future and do it. So my commitment is that we will, as a county, do what we need to do to fix this intersection, whether or without this development, however we go forward in doing that. But, uh, funding will be an issue. I hope that we can identify that. I'm sure I can try to work that out. But, uh, we need to fix, we started this corridor some ten years ago when the lowering of the hill and the improvement of the intersection at Johnson's Ferry. Quite frankly, at that time, we didn't go far enough east because at that time, the information suggested that we could stop here at a normal, at a natural stopping point in this intersection. But clearly, we need to go on and we'll continue to do that. So, um, it's, it's, I think this will be good for the community. I think there's an indication in marketplace that it won't stand empty, but it will get, actually go quite regularly and quite fast. So, um, I appreciate everyone's thoughts and concerns and efforts to be a part of this, this, this day here today. Any other comments from the board?
I have a couple of thoughts. If we could have that schematic back up, please, of the land use plan. For me, a picture is always worth a thousand words and, um, of, of the existing commercial around it. There we go. And it just reminded me of a couple of areas out in West Cobb, uh, near, uh, commercial entities and utilizing a transition kind of approach. Um, and this area is very familiar, um, I'm very familiar with the Target Center that we have on Dallas Highway and Barrett Parkway. And then we put in some senior condos. So I was just wondering, you know, if indeed the peak hour traffic seems to be a real hassle, which it is all over the county, that perhaps looking at a residential senior living solely, um, type of project there would eliminate additional peak hour traffic. Because I know that seniors, and I will be retired here in a couple of months, I'm not going out between seven and nine o'clock in the morning, I can tell you. I'm gonna be going out at ten, eleven, whatever. Um, that it might be beneficial to look at a residential senior living, which again, would also, um, not add to your schools. Uh, you know, and perhaps looking at if it's, if it's not suburban condos, uh, you know, detached cottages, something along those lines. Because you certainly have amenities there where people could walk to shops and whatever else. But it, it just looks very familiar to a couple of areas in my district in whether or not any consideration was given i- in that, in that perspective.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Roth?
One of the most difficult, uh, zonings that we have to consider are ones, um, land that is between intense commercial, like this property, and residential. Um, there have been a few instances, um, in East Cobb. And I know that one of the speakers, um, referenced Lower Roswell and Johnson Ferry. And I'm not saying that necessarily this has to be thought of as the same, but there are similarities because a lot of times the land that's, that is left is between intense commercial and residential. And one of the first things that I know in District Two that has always been considered is the impact on the people that are already there because they're the ones that are the most impacted. Um, and so the communities, both to the south and to the east of this property, spoke up very clearly in the past when the board went along with their objections and rejected, uh, a low-rise office zoning, which is typically what the board uses as a transition from commercial to residential. But the community spoke loud and clear and said that they did not want any commercial, even down at the lowest levels, which low-rise office is. Low-rise office is single-story. The community was very clear in their objection to that. The community has also been very clear in their objection to the initial plan for this, where there was commercial across the front. There is a very successful, um, development down on South Atlanta Road and Cumberland, Ivy Walk, that is in a similar situation with intense commercial, um, with residential behind it. And there was a commercial strip that was put in front that had small restaurants and shops. Um, but once again, the community was very clear in this case that that is not what they wanted. And, and all the instances in District Two, um, the community's concerns relative to the properties right next to a proposal are the ones that matter the most because they're the ones that are gonna be impacted the most by new construction. So I think that that's very important. Um, yes, I know there's a lot of opposition here, but the communities directly impacted by this are in support of the project.
Now, please, again, Decorm.
Uh, concerning the traffic, um, you know, it's very clear that there is a traffic issue. And I agree with the chairman that it has to be addressed. And it should not just be on the back of the developer, um, to fix the problem. It is clearly a problem that has been in place over time. And I agree with the chairman that the county needs to step up and commit to the residents in the area to address and to solve the problem. Levels of service E and F and C and D are not acceptable. And those are the one, those, um, grades are what the county looks at when they have to come in and, uh, address traffic problems. So I, I agree with the chairman and, and I will, um, work with him and fellow commissioners to make sure that we come up with the, um, funds to work with the developer to solve the problem.
Any other comments?
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one more thing. Um, if this is approved, that, um, we, we would like to do the improvements with the development so that, um, it all goes in at one time with the traffic flow. And, um, I'll be holding additional community meetings to show you the plan and, and, um, get your input as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Question.
Sure.
Yes, with respect to all the traffic concerns that have been shared from the comments made from the commissioners, are we committing to making the traffic improvements prior to the development? I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
It will go with.
What we're doing, what we're doing is committing to, in conjunction with the development, when the improvements are made at the roadway and the intersection, that we would incorporate all the improvements that are needed at that time. The commitment also is if, if for some reason this doesn't go forward, the county will still come back and, and, and look at this intersection and make the necessary improvements.
So it'll be simultaneous if it does move forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Gorm.
I just need some clarification. If we're committing to a roadway project, would we not have to vote on this as an individual agenda item as we do in our business meetings? I just want clarification on that because I, I don't remember us, in conjunction with any other zoning project, going ahead and approving, making approval of non-existent roadway projects and that this would require some study, um, some funding, and then approval by the full board.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if we expend any funding from our budget towards this project, it will come back as a, uh, individual item.
And if I may, we, we are, with, um, what we've gotten so far as far as the draft, um, which isn't really finalized yet, um, because DOT's got to do some work out there as well. But with the, the contributions that have, um, been made by the developer and, and a rough estimate, we're hoping we will be within the hundred and fifty thousand to make the necessary improvements with the commitment that they're, uh, uh, over and above their already committed left turn lane and D cell lane, which was already part of their, um, plan. So it, it, the, the fact is, we would have to come back because there is no funding for this in DOT's budget currently or in any of the SPOSS lists. So, um, this would be funded by the developer. Um, but again, once we get a final draft of everything and get input from the residents surrounding there, um, we'll have a more firm number and know, you know, what would be expected of the board to, to do.
Commissioner Gorm.
I'm just a little uncomfortable, and my vote may reflect that, about the scope of the commitment that this board is making regarding transportation improvements um, in relation to zoning. Um, right now, I, I hear about, you know, D cell lanes and a left-hand turn lane. However, what was presented was an issue with Childers Road and site distance and, uh, not being able to turn and the backup in Level F. I'm not quite certain what the scope is of the improvements related to this project. And if we were to make a blanket statement or a stipulation regarding this rezoning, it needs to be somewhat, um, refined because a stipulation goes, is a legal agreement that goes along with the zoning.
Yeah, okay. So just to be clear, and a good point, there's, there's recommendations by DOT, staff DOT, which are part of the commitment by the developer as part of the rezoning if it were to go through. There's this, there's another stipulation added that the developer will add it up to an incremental one hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a site plan, towards roadway improvements associated with the intersection, to try to alleviate some of the concerns at Childers Road and Schallford Road. That is part of the zoning. My, my commitment is to try to work hard with the community and the DOT. And I've gotten an indication from the director that she's in, in support of that, that we have to make sure that we do it right when we do it. And we'll get that, even if it's an additional five thousand dollars or whatever over the commitment, we could find it somewhere in our budget that she has available to her. So this is a preliminary plan that's been presented here, um, which you haven't seen yet, which shows.
Okay, but that would not be part of this is zoning. Okay, thank you. That's, that's what I want the clarification on.
And it's not part of the motion. It was his recommendation that he's committing to the public that we will do that.
Okay.
But it would still have to come back for approval if it's any funding involved from the county.
Mr. Atkins, is that an appropriate approach for?
Yes, I, I, I think we're all probably talking the same language. It just may sound different. There's a separate process, as you well know, for DOT funding. This is zoning. You can put whatever stipulations you want to in this that are related to the improvements that relate to the project. I think what I'm hearing is a commitment on behalf of at least some of the commissioners to continue to follow that through the normal DOT funding process.
Commissioner Gorm, just kind of additional information. Um, the current estimates by DOT for the improvements that Commissioner Burrow is talking about is about a hundred and five thousand. The developer has committed up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So there's an additional forty-five thousand dollars above and beyond what DOT has forecast those improvements to cost.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that is a rough draft. And then once they get in there, there may be additional, you know, um, improvements that need to be made. So that's why it's, it's up to a hundred and fifty.
And I, and I think we have a good motion and a good second and good conversation. I also think Commissioner Gorm has brought up some excellent points that we need to have that delineation, um, between what is the zoning stipulation and what is a, an ancillary product. And I think that's clear, uh, is where we're heading. So, um, do you, one other thing?
And it's still going back to the same question. If the DOT process is a separate process from the zoning process, are we stipulating at all that these are going to, again, occur simultaneously or one occur before the other? Or are we just assuming that one is gonna follow?
All we can a hundred percent commit to at this point is that as we go through the zoning process and the plan and site plan review, DOT will be, um, committed to bringing their recommendations forward. forward so that all work can be done at the same time. Schedule sometimes, I know DOT can be ready with their recommendation by the time the developer's ready to make his, move his dirt. So it's a matter of making sure that we coordinate those efforts like we do with Sewer and Water and Water Sewer and Developments across the county. So the intent is to do it all at the same. I can't stipulate to that, but I can certainly commit DOT to that, that they will be ready before Chadwick is ready. Right, Jane?
Yes.
She's taking
Right, Jane? Thank you, Jane.
And Eric, where's Eric?
No Eric. So we have a motion, we have a second. We've had a lot of robust conversation, which is always good for the product. Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And we're going to take another two-minute break to let the room clear up, please.
To the October 21st, 2014 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
I don't think the law is clear.
We have heard so far this morning Z-46. We just concluded Z-56. We're going to move to Z-61 now to accommodate those folks that are here in opposition and to move that along. It is my understanding this will probably take us past the noon hour. So for planning purposes, we are going to hear Z-61. At the conclusion of that case, we will take an hour break for lunch and then come back for the rest of the agenda for the day. So if you would call Z-61, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Resoning case Z-61, Capital City View Homes LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 to RA-5 for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision in Land Lot 8 of the first district. The property is located on the northwest side of Woodlawn Drive, north of Powers Road. The applicant's representative is present. And earlier, there were 16 people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Mr. Sams, before we begin, if I could ask the folks that are here that are not part of this case to either please have a seat or move, exit the room, please. We appreciate everyone's cooperation. Mr. Sams, when you're available, when you're ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Garbage Sams. The law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally, and I represent the applicant. Capital City View Homes LLC concerning this application. I have with me today Mr. Brad Barnett of Capital City View. Also, we have Mr. David Meyer of DGM Land Planning Consultants. Should you have any questions from a perspective hydrologically or from an engineering perspective. This is an application that was heard and approved by your planning commission a couple of weeks ago. It was unanimous recommendation for approval. As you know, or you may know, this application was previously continued in order to give us an opportunity to meet not only with staff, but to meet with area residents, representatives of ECCA, representatives of Kings Cove, representatives of the Fountain at Woodlawn, representatives of Windmead, and also area residents that are not necessarily in a subdivision with a formed HOA. We've also submitted as of the 15th of this month, last week, a drainage exhibit to help you understand better the stormwater implications relative to the property and also a revised site plan which follows the directions we received from the planning commission back on October the 7th. The property at issue is shown here on this aerial photo. This is a 2.15 acre tract of land. As you can see, it's located on the northwest side of Woodlawn, near its intersection with Power Road. The property has a single-family residence that's located on it right now. It's located in an area that's denominated as low-density residential on the future land use map. And the property is presently rented out, but of course ultimately will be demolished if this application for rezoning is approved. Under the future land use map, you see our property's in an LDR area. The property that's to our northeast is in an area that is denominated as low-density residential as well. Although where that arrow is now, all those subdivisions and those properties are zoned to 3.42 units per acre, which is not consistent with the future land use map. Those were zoned some years ago. The, in fact, they were zoned on both sides of Woodlawn some years ago. All the RA-4s and the RA-5. The RA-4 classification, of course, having been eliminated. This is a proposed rezoning of this property from R-20 to RA-5 for the purposes of a custom-quality-built, single-family residential subdivision consisting of a total number of five custom-built homes ranging in price points from $850,000 to $1.2 million. I've told you all the folks we've been meeting with and why we needed to have the continuance during the period of time that this was pending before the planning commission. We think that's been productive. We think it's been fruitful. We have, of course, been able to receive a favorable recommendation from your staff. And then largely as a result of those meetings and communications and the multiple stipulation letters, we received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission unanimously last, or two weeks ago. On September 23rd, I submitted our third letter of agreeable stipulations and conditions, but that didn't stop or chill the dialogue. We continued on with that over the past several weeks and months. And within that time, of course, we have also submitted an additional, what I call a supplemental stipulation letter, a comprehensive one dated October the 3rd. There is absolutely no way to go over the entirety of all the stipulations and conditions. They're voluminous. But what I'd like to do is just cover the more salient points if I could for purposes of the discussions today. The site plan you're seeing now, this is an RA-5 district. As you know, there's a minimum 7,000 square foot homes in RA-5. What you're looking at here is an average lot size of 8,918 for the average. So that ranges, excuse me, the average lot size is 12,549, ranging from 8,918 to 19,248. So an average lot size of 12,549, we actually exceed the average lot sizes in the other RA-4s and the other subdivisions of a similar ilk up and down Woodlawn Drive. The homes, as I said, will range up above $1 million. They'll all have three-car garages. They'll all be a maximum height of 25 feet. The architectural style and composition of the homes is reflected on the photographs that have been provided to you. This is four-sided architecture, that is equal treatment on all four sides. Combination of masonry, stone, stucco, hardy plank, brick, and other cementious composition. Of course, the subdivision entrance signage will be right there, as you can see, on Woodlawn. We've agreed with Windmead subdivision on a number of points. First of all, they wanted to see a masonry wall along Woodlawn. We have a minimal amount of road frontage, but we're going to be doing that wall for them. It'll be a minimum of six feet in height, the design of which will go before Windmead HOA for them to have review and approval of that. Also for Windmead, as you can see, we have reconfigured or we've aligned, rather, our subdivision street with the Windmead point of ingress and egress to their subdivision, not just for Windmead's purposes and at their behest, but also because DOT has asked us to do that as well. That changed the interior configuration of the property such that we are requiring some rear setback variances. Those are the only ones we are requiring, but that's one reason that has kind of pushed that issue and required the variance. We no longer require any variances on the front of the properties, however. As you can see on this site plan, we'll be constructing an eight-foot wooden, two-sided cap-rail privacy fence around the entire perimeter of the property, saving except for the masonry wall on Woodlawn and the returns going down a portion of the property. Along that eight-foot wooden privacy fence, we'll also have cryptomere, as you can see, that'll be planted, or it could be some other evergreen as dictated by the landscape oversight committee which we have set up. And the landscape oversight committee will consist of a representative of the Fountain at Woodlawn, Kings Cove, and Windmead, and also, of course, the applicant and the district commissioner will be the final arbiter with respect to any decisions that can otherwise be reached. As reflected on the site plan, the operational aspects in terms of what DOT has requested, we have done, including the realignment of our entrance and also the installation of sidewalk, curb, and gutter along Woodlawn, ensuring proper site distance of 390 feet, and the installations of sidewalk along one side of the interior street that you see within the subdivision. This is a site that has some unusual configurations with respect to the stormwater flow. So I've got an exhibit I'd like to put up that shows the stormwater flow in the area. I'm not sure if you can see this real clearly, but this is, of course, outlines the subject property here. We've had discussions with the Carlos family here, as represented by Mr. Nay. As you can see, stormwater flows presently come through the Carlos property here. They come through our property in this direction here, ultimately culminating in a drainage pattern that goes here to our, as you can see, our detention is back here. So what we anticipate is there'll be some sort of stormwater conveyance system. Right now, stormwater management is saying a swell that will be located in this general vicinity here. We will also have, in addition to detention here, within the street configuration of the private street, there'll be some underground detention here as well. We've increased, or agreed, rather, to over-detein here to a matter of 10% or 10% above what is required on the ordinance. And in addition to that, once the stormwater flows, leave the site, as you can see in this particular instance, they go in this direction. That's right down to Kings Cove subdivision, and there's at least two lakes in Kings Cove subdivision where we've agreed to do pre-development and post-development studies on those lakes to ensure that sedimentation does not escape from the site. And if it does, then certainly we'll take care of that. There are existing stormwater problems downstream. We're cognizant and mindful of that. We've crafted the stipulations and revised the site plans in accordance, we think, with those discussions we've had with Kings Cove. We've got a reverter clause that's attached to this for 18 months. Should we not pull permits? We've also got some of the boilerplate stipulations regarding it coming back to the board of commissioners or rather to the district commissioners should there be any revisions that need to be made. Now, I'd like to cover real quickly, and I see that I'm running out of time, but I think it's important because these are conversations that have culminated rather recently. With respect to the Carlos's property, which I showed to you, which is contiguous and to our northeast, we've agreed to share all of the hydrological studies once this is fully engineered with Mr. Nay and his client so that they'll have an opportunity prior to or contemporaneously with plan review to submit that to a peer hydrologist for their review and approval in order for them to have input with respect to drainage. We understand that the drainage on their property is severe. We've accommodated for that, but we want them to be comfortable with that. And so thus, we have, in fact, offered to do that. In addition to that, as I mentioned, the landscape oversight committee, this will be formed right prior to the submission of plans to the plan review process and the culmination of the landscape plan. And the cryptomere you see will be planted 10 feet on center. We're presently in negotiations with two separate home builders for the site. We think the culmination of those discussions will occur very shortly, and we're amenable to bringing back even more specific renderings and elevations depicting the architectural style and composition to the district commissioner once that's completed. Today, we simply ask that you follow your planning commission's recommendation for approval, which followed your planning staff's recommendation for approval, and that you, as a board, take recognition of the thought, discussion, and work and effort that's been placed into this and approve it as presented today. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So we're at 11 and a half minutes for the opposition. For our speaker, please.
Good morning. Doug Davis, East Cobb Civic Association. I'm going to make this quick, because I'm going to be talking fast. The current site plan is still asking for a 10% setback variance on the rear, on every lot. What this is asking, that the lot be adjusted to fit the house, not the house fitting the lot. These oversized footprints also brings up impervious surface issues. We have three lots, very close to the 40% maximum. If you add sidewalks to the front door, if you take the driveway to lot 5 to the rear garage, which does not reach on the plan, it looks like it goes into the living room, they're going to be closer to the 40%. If a homeowner wants to add outdoor fireplace, outdoor kitchen, a patio, chances are he's going to have to be asking for a variance. Let's hope he asks for permission, not forgiveness. If these variances are granted, it may increase the stormwater drain off on a site that has major stormwater problems. Let's look at what we're asking the future homeowners. We have a private road. We have underground detention. We have a private detention pond. Oh, we have a ditch, oh, excuse me, a swell in their backyard. All this has to be maintained by the future homeowners in addition to the normal HOA responsibilities. This is an unreasonable burden to put on future homeowners of Cobb County. The ECCA cannot support this petition. A RA-5 subdivision and a low-density residential should have homes that fit the RA zoning on every lot. So we recommend a vote today to deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I am Nancy Walters Meek, and I, along with all of the bordering neighbors, oppose this rezoning. Regardless to what Mr. Sam says, opposition continues to grow toward this project. We are stunned that the surrounding RA-4 subdivisions are being compared to this project. As you can see, the existing properties have similar lots with smaller homes, walking paths. We don't have it up here. The existing RA properties have similar lots with smaller homes, walking paths, fountains, islands, picnic areas, gatehouses, and gathering cul-de-sacs located in their developments, as well as wide wooded buffers. They also have divided streets for their entries. This proposed project has absolutely none of those amenities. Additionally, this RA project will be squashed between two estate lots with large private homes on each side, and it will be the only RA project on Woodlawn Drive from Fountain Drive to Paper Mill Road. These are just some of those homes that are on the lots that are our 20s, 40s, 60s, and 80s. This is not the right project for this lot. As shown on the site plan, a 14-foot deck or a patio that is added to a house will be four feet into the landscape buffer, over the top of the bushes. It is like trying to squeeze a size eight-foot into a size six shoe. And finally, six-foot bushes against an eight-foot fence as a buffer is absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Let me go rapidly, members of the commission. I'm Jim Nay, and I represent Chris and Irene Carlos, the next-door neighbors who are involved in this tract, if you will. Let me pass up to you, if I can, at this time, a petition that's been signed by 79 of our immediate area neighbors who are very strongly opposed to. I think 79 represents a significant showing, particularly when it involves everybody who touches or contacts the property, if you would. Seven copies are being sent to you at this time. And probably the most important ingredient that we want to talk to you today about is drainage. Let us, if we can, introduce you our drainage expert, Pam Little. I'll bring Pam up in just one moment. Pam is a civil engineer. She specializes in stormwater drainage and erosion control. She's a professional engineer with over 15 years of experience. Pam has her bachelor's degree from Columbia University and her master's degree from Georgia Tech. Let me introduce you to our expert, Pam.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Nay. Today, I'm just going to talk about some of the stormwater issues associated with this zoning proposition. The applicant provided you with a drainage map, and that drainage map simply provided arrows showing where water comes from onto the property. I expanded upon that map slightly and did a drainage basin study based on Cobb County topographic GIS information to delineate basins that are flowing into the property. So in addition to the 2.15 acres of the site that is flowing to the low point on that site and into adjacent yards, there's an area of about two acres to the northeast of the site, and that's the area that drains through Irene Carlos's yard and kind of sheet flows into a drainage conveyance that currently runs through the subject property. There's also an area of about three and a half to four acres to the south-southwest that topographically looks like it runs through the site as well. So that makes it a significant drainage area running to this site. So the reason this is important is because of the grading of the site. So right now, the site functions as a drainage conveyance. Once the site has been developed, based on the site plan provided by the applicant, that grading that allows rainwater to get to the low point of the site will be interrupted. I took a look at their site plan and did a very conceptual grading plan based on some of the requirements of Cobb County. It is a private road, but the fire marshal will not allow a residential road for fire apparatus access to run it greater than 10%. The existing topography runs between 11 and 12%, which means they're going to have to fill in that area to bring the grades up to allow the road to run per Cobb County requirements. So I did a grading sketch, and what that shows is where I believe the road is going to be graded when they go ahead and pursue this design. And everywhere on the side along that northeastern property line where the line's kind of, it's just a big red line, that's, what that is, is it's going to either be a very steep embankment or a wall. Now, they've proposed putting a wall along that property line, which would impede the flow of water. A steep embankment would also impede the flow of water. So once I took a look at this grading, I also took a look and to see how we could put a swell in there. If we are already having trouble fitting the road, I wanted to see if we can, do we have the room for a swell? So I took a look at just a basic cross-section showing a 20-foot-wide private road with a six-inch curb, fairly standard, 10-inch shoulder with a sidewalk on it, and then I graded down at a three-to-one slope into a small swell that would handle that drainage from the north-northeastern portions of northeastern areas adjacent to this site. And when I did that, the end of my swell comes up about two and a half feet above existing grade at the property line. So what that means is that water would have to jump from Irene Carlos's property into the swell. Clearly, that is not a reasonable solution. So I looked at, there has to be a reasonable solution. So I looked and I tried to figure out how we could make that swell fit. I could not figure out a way to make the swell fit on the property without the applicant getting a drainage, or I'm sorry, a grading and drainage easement from Irene Carlos. And that's not even taking into effect having a landscaping wall, landscaping fence, landscaping trees along that property line where we're proposing to put a swell to handle this drainage. Now, drainage from the north-northeastern areas isn't the only concern. Another concern associated with the property is downstream drainage. There've been downstream drainage complaints. The area is flood-prone from reports of neighbors. So there's a concern that the development of the site will exacerbate those existing problems. So just looking at the existing runoff versus the proposed runoff. I did some calculations, and I did them based on the one-year storm. A lot of times engineers use a 100-year storm. A 100-year storm is a worst-case scenario, 1% chance of it happening any given year. So I used the one-year storm. There's 100% chance of a one-year storm happening in any given year. So there's a storm we've seen, the storm that happens, we see it in our neighborhoods all the time. So I'd use the one-year storm. During a one-year storm in the pre-developed condition, we have about 1.2, or I'm sorry, 1.2 CFS, which is cubic feet per second, leaving the property. What that equates to is something that you can translate in your minds. There's a volume associated with that as well. So if someone took a nine-gallon bucket and tossed it over the property line every second for about an hour, that's how long it takes to drain the property. That gives you an idea of volume. Once the property is developed, we have almost twice the amount of volume in that one-year storm leaving the property. Now, I understand that the applicant is agreeing to detain the runoff, but detention only slows the rate. It does not reduce the volume. So there's still going to be additional volume draining downstream. And what that translates to is you have, so you have an additional volume, and now, instead of using a nine-gallon bucket, because we're going to over-detein, we're going to use an eight-gallon bucket, and we're going to throw the bucket over the property line every second for about two, two and a half hours. So in my opinion, it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, for this site plan to be developed and properly account for the runoff from the north and northeastern properties. And I believe that it has the, I believe that it is likely to cause and exacerbate the downstream drainage problems. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public hearing at this particular time. We'll turn this over to Commissioner Hahn for leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Before I start, I know that there was, I spoke with one of the homeowners in Kings Cove last night, and I believe you all have this sheet. The issue from the folks in Kings Cove, besides the water, is sedimentation and silt that has gone into their lake. So I know that she did not get a chance to stand up and speak, but that's what the sheet that you have and some of what their concerns are and what they would like to see addressed. One of the things I look at in a infill development like this piece property here is the impact on the surrounding community, in particular the lots right around it. The first thing I look at is the number of lots and how they kind of match up with the lots that are touching them. Yes, it is true, in this particular development, it is fairly a one-to-one match. And one of the things I want to mention, and one of the folks in the opposition talked about, that the adjoining lot is an estate-type lot. Yes, it is a single-family home, but it is on property that is owned RA-4. Just so everyone in the audience understands, that means that that property owner or some future owner could come into the county and pull permits to build more than one house on the property because it's owned RA-4. So although it may be, and this is very true of a lot of the properties on Woodlawn and Paper Mill, even though there's the big houses that the opposition showed, many of them are zoned R-20 and can have more houses built. But the, back to my point about infill, minimizing the impact on the neighbors. If an impact is realized, then the number of lots really, you know, that becomes significant if that can reduce that impact. One of the things that, in looking at this, that I've had concerns about, and it seems to be the predominant discussion, is the stormwater. I've had conversations with Dave Brayden, and Dave, could you come up? The, and as I reminded you this morning when we talked, the comment that you made at the planning commission was, if everything is done perfectly, there shouldn't be a problem. And we know that perfect is pretty hard to achieve. So now, in light of some of the information we heard this morning, I do have serious concerns that stormwater has not been fully understood and addressed, and I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, there still continue to be a lot of issues that, if it was approved today, that we would have to hammer out. that we would have to hammer out in plan review. And the biggest one is, well, what has already been brought up is how to convey the off-site runoff through the site. And clearly, you can't do all that through a channel on the upstream side because that's just enough, you're probably just going to be able to get enough to get the flow from, it's coming across the side of the Carlos's property. There'll have to be a pipe that runs, carries from across the street as well as up the hill, down the right-of-way. So, well, it's a private drive, but it would be through the street. My biggest concern is downstream because there is not a really well, you can see there's somewhat of a swale when it leaves the site, but then it gets flatter and flatter as it goes through the side yard of the property there on Kings Lake Drive, and then through the front yard, really the next two front yards down the hill before it gets to the creek. And that will need to be, again, some solution, either pipe it or a dry-stone swale or enhanced swale, or probably a combination of both to get it through those properties and get it down to the street. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure they can design that for the zoning hearing, but it would be something that we would have to do at plan review.
Right. So there's a lot of, a lot of concerns and issues, and it kind of goes along with the homeowner in Kings Cove. We talked about sedimentation.
And we are requiring a pre- and post-survey on that lake, yes.
Right, okay. All right, thanks, Dave. One of the things, and my neighborhood has at least one of them, and I hesitate to use the term, but it's what's in the development community, and that's trash lots. Back in the sixties and the seventies, when subdivisions were developed and stormwater was not as big a concern, or was not addressed the way it is today with detention or retention ponds, there were lots, and for example, in my neighborhood, there's at least two that are one-acre lots that were used or anticipated to be used for stormwater management. What has happened over time is that these lots, as the amount of open land diminishes in these Cobb, particularly, these lots all of a sudden become valuable to be developed. They were never intended to be developed, and so they become extremely challenging when you start looking at development on them. But in light of all the concerns that Dave has expressed, the opposition has expressed, and that I have about stormwater, I'm going to make a motion that we hold Z-61 until the November hearing to give the applicant an opportunity to sit down with stormwater and come forward with a more definitive explanation as to how they're going to deal with the water and show, at least in my mind, how they can justify five lots or even four lots because the existing property or the existing zoning would allow three. I just need to get a better understanding as to how the water issues that quite a few people have articulated very well, how they're going to be addressed. So my motion is to hold.
As a motion is seconded by... Commissioner Gorm, you have a comment?
No, I agree with Commissioner Ott. I do have some concerns regarding the stormwater, the management of the stormwater, and I'm very concerned about, right now, a swale to handle that. And as Mr. Braden had mentioned, there's probably going to be more required of this site than just a swale. And you always, and you project to the future, and good points that were brought up, what if these homeowners want to put in a patio, want to put out an outdoor kitchen? You know, there goes your swale, there goes your impervious. So it's a very tight fit for a very small site, and I agree with the motion.
Thank you. I would also suggest that we maybe need to see any easements fulfilled that may be needed before it comes back, so.
Yeah, bottom line, I mean, I'm giving them thirty days, but I'm suspecting it's going to take more. But basically, I don't want to see this back in front of the board until there's much more definitive information as to how the stormwater would be dealt with under their proposal.
Thank you. We have a motion. It's seconded. Any other comments in the board? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. So I see by the clock, it's noon, so we're going to take a one-hour break, be back one o'clock to conclude our agenda, and we will start with Z-45 at that point. Good afternoon. Welcome back to the October 21st, 2014 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. We're now in our, the beginning of our regular cases with Z-45. John, if you'd call that, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z-45, MCP Ackerman Corporate Forum LLC, request rezoning from GC to RRC for the purpose of a mixed-use development in landlots 850, 851, 876, and 877 of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the southwest side of Circle 75 Parkway, south of Wendy Hill Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-45?
Sir, would you stand up again, please? Sir?
He's not opposed to it.
Oh, okay. Choose carefully when you stand up.
Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Here on behalf of the applicant and owner, MCP Ackerman Corporate Forum, in this application for rezoning, this is property, it's 12.6 acres located on Circle 75, just, depending how you look at it, just south of its intersection with Wendy Hill. And we're here for this application for rezoning. As Mr. Peterson explained, this property is currently zoned general commercial. The proposal is to rezone to RRC, regional retail commercial, for purposes of a mixed-use development and really what would be a first-class redevelopment of this twelve, basically twelve-and-a-half acres. The property currently, and I think if he'll flip over to the board that we have now, I just want to kind of go through the evolution of this project in terms of where it is today and then what is being proposed, because I believe it is a very exciting project for this location. What's in front of you now is a screen, a board that shows the as-built survey of the property. That's the property in its current condition. That is, it's a 1980s vintage office property, even though zoned general commercial, consisting of six office buildings, about 188,000 square feet of office space built at that time. That has, over the course of this period of time, you know, it's basically a Class B or Class C, maybe Class B minus at best, type of office property. And it is, as of today, and where this is located in Cobb County, a prime candidate for redevelopment by Ackerman, and one that would be an exciting redevelopment at that. But it's important in the sense that, and as noted by your staff on several occasions in its comments, this property is in the Regional Activity Center, and what is proposed in the future vision for this area is when redevelopment does occur on tracks such as this, that it be a high-end, first-class redevelopment of mixed uses so that we can add to the area and not simply try to take away from it, but add to the area and certainly improve the quality of the development that's already there. With that, I'm going to now turn and go through these boards and show you what is being proposed as well, as well. First, just to take you through the proposed site plan and uses. This is Circle 75 and the twelve-and-a-half acres, 12.6 acres that you see here. What is proposed is a true mixed use along the frontage. You'll have proposed two retail buildings comprising approximately 80,000 square feet of new retail. This would be proposed for national retail-type tenants, so very top-quality, first-tier quality retail tenants. Also, there will be proposed two hotel buildings. Those hotels would be a maximum of eight stories in height, containing a maximum of 290 rooms. These are true hotels. As stated in the stipulation letter, this is not extended stay or any type of extended stay-type suites, but true hotels. Further, these aren't conference hotels, but true tourist visitor hotels for this fantastic location. Followed to the rear is the residential component, which are residential leased units. Those buildings wrap around a central parking feature that's located to the rear and interior to the residential units. Those will be a maximum of five stories and a maximum of 392 residential leased units. And I'll save, or so that you're not bored by my, just simply reciting what's in the stipulation letter, but suffice to say, in the stipulation letter are several pages worth of stipulations with respect to the residential units that secure and enhance the quality of those units in terms of their interior features, as well as their appearance, as well as, as it relates to the interplay between the residential units and the true mixed-use nature of this proposed project. Now, just going to show you some perspectives of the proposal as well, and these are also a part of the stipulations. First, this is a overall perspective, kind of aerial view of the proposed project. Again, Circle 75, and you can see orientation of the retail buildings, the two hotel buildings, and then the residential to the rear. And what you can see is just the real, true, first-class and quality nature of this proposal and what it can bring. Also, from this shot, I think it's also important to note, and is noted by staff during our several meetings with your staff departments, is the overall reduction in impervious area from what it is built as today, which is a parking field with single office buildings, to an arrangement that provides a much more attractive frontage along Circle 75, much more attractive buildings, and substantially less in terms of its impervious area over what it is today. These last two perspectives kind of bring you in to the overall mixed-use development first, as you're standing, really getting close to the entry point on Circle 75. And you can see from this perspective, the attention to detail, both from landscaping and from building architecture, which is awfully exciting, especially if you consider how this looks as proposed versus if you drove out there today and viewed it. Not that there's anything wrong with those office buildings necessarily, but I think it's more about how exciting this project can be. Lastly, this is yet another perspective, as you get closer to the building so that you can see, again, the high level of quality thought that has gone into the planning for this proposed project, as well as, again, the high level of quality that's shown, both from the overall perspective and the individual component perspective of the retail, hotel, and residential units as well. Lastly, I want to touch on one of the issues that had come up at the planning commission. Before that, really, was staff, is as we work through this project, is parking. Parking in a mixed-use development is always an issue from the standpoint of this, and that is that you get the right parking mix. Under Cobb County's current set of ordinances, shared parking, or the ability to have a mixture of uses, share parking, is not really accounted for. So what we have provided to staff and what we have performed is an urban land institute, a ULI-specific parking study. They have specific studies that they've done, running through reams of data whereby they can determine appropriate levels of shared parking, how that will work, so that you can arrive at the right parking mix. A project neither needs too little parking or too much parking. Too much parking just leads to too much impervious area. Too little parking just leads to overcrowding. With this, with the nature and the high level of quality of this development, parking is going to be something they pay attention to very much. It matters because it matters to the future retail tenants. Those are first-tier, top-tier retail tenants. It matters to the hotel guests, and it matters overall as well to the residential guests. So there is secured parking for each use, as well as shared parking that combines with that. Our parking study shows parking that will be really in a range, depending on exactly how, that would be built out between 950 and about 1,100 spaces. So what we've asked for and what's in our stipulation letter is that the ULI parking study be reviewed and approved by county staff, including specifically county DOT, to make sure we have that coordination and everybody's comfortable with the number of parking spaces being provided. But we feel, rest assured, that given the vast experience that ULI has with these types of mixed uses and shared uses, that we're going to have the right parking for this development and make sure of that. And I think with that combination of review, we can be assured that that will occur. Again, we have a stipulation letter that's dated October 1, 2014, that puts all of what I presented to you in a written form and details that out in much more detail than I could even spend ten minutes with here today. But it goes into great detail about each component. It goes into great detail about the security that will be provided for the residences, about the security of the hotel and the retail uses, as well as with our agreement to provide the necessary DOT and road improvements. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Also, we have representatives and principals of Ackerman that are here as well that can answer any questions I may not. So with that, we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application, subject to the October 1 stipulation letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. For the record, there was no opposition. Mr. Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the fact that there is no opposition speaks a lot about how this is a good redevelopment of the property, and I think that the renderings show, you know, that it's going to be a welcome addition to the area. The only thing I really want to touch on, and Kevin touched on it a little bit, is indeed the parking. With the other things going on in the corridor, it is really, becomes important for the county to make sure that parking is addressed in each and every zoning case that comes for us, before us. So I am going to kind of reiterate in my, in my motion, the stipulation about the approval of community development and DOT, and I would just like to see it myself, too. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve Z-45, subject to the site plan submitted with the stipulation letter dated October 1, 2014, to include the planning commission comments and recommendations, all other staff comments and recommendations, and to highlight stipulation number 18, which talks about the ULI shared parking study, and to basically add an additional stipulation that says that prior to the issuance of any land disturbance permits or any other permits, that the shared parking study be approved by Cobb DOT Community Development, prior to the issuance. that the Shared Parking Study be approved by Cobb DOT Community Development, prior to the issuance of those permits.
Thank you. I'll second your motion. Is there any comments on the board? Call a question? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Yes, sir. Resonating case Z-69, OWF Investment Corp., requests rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of a residential subdivision in landlots 987 and 988 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Sewell Mill Road, south of Broward Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-69? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-69? Please raise your hand. For the record, so there's no one opposed.
Morning, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Doug Franklin, President of OWF Investment Corporation. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rodney Raines, he's President of Raines Homes. We're currently asking for, we have, okay, let's do that other side. We actually have three parcels on our site. They've shown there's four, but there are actually three. It's four point five acres. And two of the parcels are owned by the Andersons, and then the back west, northwest parcel is owned by the Hamby Estates. So you can see it's wooded, and then it's got agricultural properties on there, open area. And so we're requesting from a R-20 zoning down to a R-15. It'd be nine units. We're going to be at one point nine seven units per acre. We'll have an average lot size of seventeen thousand forty-eight acres. There's our site in the green there. If you see to the north of us, we've got R-15, which is the Renaissance, is two point two seven units per acre. We've got the park, which is two point three two units to the acre. We've got RA4 to our south, which is three point eight nine units per acre. And then we've got RA6 that abuts our property on the south, and that is at four point eight six units per acre. Then we've got some LRO and then some commercial across the street there. There's our actual site. You can see our lot number two is our smallest lot, fifteen thousand three square feet. Our largest lot is lot number eight, which is twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet. And then the larger lots are against that R-20 on the rear, and that's Clasdel Estate, and that's one point seven four units per acre. This is a development I did in the Vineyard Smyrna area, Soul Vineyards Estates. And we're proposing three thousand square feet as our minimum, range up to forty-five hundred square feet. We'll have a two-car minimum attached garage, possibly two-car detached garage. But you'll see, the majority of these homes probably designed with a three-car garage. And so as you can see in these designs, we offset the garage to the front, which is about twelve to fourteen feet, and then we stair-step our houses back, so the main body of the house is further on back. You can see that more clearly on Old White Oak Estates. That's another development I did in the Vineyard area of Smyrna. And then, so you can stair-step the house back, and then that gives you, on the, if you look at the rear there, our landscaping, what we try to do is tie in our landscaping to the existing landscaping, and that cuts down on the impervious area and the stormwater. And then, let's go to the next. Coming back to our site, if you look, we actually elongated our retention pond in the back northwest corner. We actually took out one lot. We were going to be at ten lots, and then we reduced it to nine lots. And the reason doing, Bart Board, the property owners, to our rear, we decided we wanted to sheet-flow our water coming out of there versus concentrating the stream to the northwest. And so we worked with Dave Braden, so we eliminated a lot. And then that way, we can use our twenty-five-foot front building setback, so we can pull our garages into that offset, and then stair-step back. And then we ask also for a sidelines of seven and a half feet, but keep twenty feet between structures. So we aren't going to reduce that. That way, we can shift the houses up and move them around based on stormwater, so we can get around that. And then we also ask that we eliminate the thirty-foot construction buffer. And the reason being is so that we can control that water off the lots coming off of one, two, and three, and then around four, five, and six, and then nine and eight, we can actually control that water. Four fifths of our water is going to go into the retention pond, which is designed for thirty-five percent impervious area. And then one-fifth will come down to the front of our Sewell Mill, and that goes across or down Sewell Mill right away into a little drop inlet. And then we've worked with, you can actually see. In doing that, what's happened is with our bio, what we like to do is open up our retention areas, and then behind those houses, you can see how we've incorporated our landscaping into the existing houses. Then we can control that water coming back around. And then like on our uphill lots, it gives us additional area to kind of transcend down into the, into the yards and so forth, and then take that water down off the street. Also, on our site there, we've worked with DOT since the road winding on Sewell Mill Road. We've asked for the side major down to twenty-five off the existing right-of-way. And by doing so, we can, we're going to go ahead and give the forty-foot right-of-way to DOT. And then that way, we'll be able to put in our D cell lane, and then also we'll be able to pull these houses to the front and shift it to the left. Also, that'll give more, then we can, that'll less impact to the Berto's property to our north. And then we've already agreed to some screening in there. And then on our south, what we did on our south property line against the Rowe property, we ended up putting in a five-foot open area and then integrating that back into the right-of-ways with DOT. So that'll give us additional landscaping there at that point also. Then we put our sewer outfall on, coming out of lot number eight. And then we've already worked with the property owners on nine eighteen and nine twenty, and have come to agreement with them. So what we're going to do is bring our sewer easement back into their property, but only disturb it minimally. And then we're going to bore pit our, into the sewer manhole in Bradford Lane there. So we're in agreement. We've worked real hard with staff. We're in agreement with what staff recommended. We're in agreement with Cobb County Water and Sewer, and we're in agreement with the Department of Transportation. And so we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Just for the record, is there anyone here for or against this, in opposition to this application? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burrow, if you could lead our conversation, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I make a motion, I'd like to ask Tim Davidson to come up. At the Planning Commission, we did have a gentleman, Mr. Steve Uberto, who is here today, that was, had some concerns that he is upstream of the neighbor, of the subdivision proposed. And he did meet with you or talk with you. And we, I've also met with him and talked with him and with the developers. And just to be safe, I want to read for the record, not necessarily a stipulation because it will be redundant, but I would like to read the, our Cobb standards for stormwater that will reference his concerns. And it's Section 410 dot oh four dot oh two, line extension requirements. Sanitary sewer must be extended through a proposed development as necessary to serve future development upstream of the development boundary. And I'd just like to read that for the record to assure Mr. Uberto that the developers will comply. Also, that will be-
Why is he here?
Because typically, this is done in plan review, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're in agreement with all this?
Yes. Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water System. Yes, I am.
Thank you. And the developers are in agreement, so I just wanted to read that for the record.
That's time, Tim. Keep it to fewer words, okay?
Well, that's because I'm doing all the talking. Okay, so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Z-69, to delete Z-69 from R-20 to R-15, with a stip letter dated August 5, 2014, and all staff comments, recommendations, and Planning Commission recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Gorm. I'd like to ask for one thing. If you go to the stipulation letter of August 5, provided by the developer, if you go to paragraph C, I'd like to remove the second sentence of that paragraph.
The price points, yes.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to remove that second sentence that reads, "However, projected prices are expected to be in the eight hundred to nine hundred price range and higher." C reads, "The proposed anticipated sales price will be determined in marked conditions," and that's sufficient. Sure, that we advised here. So any other comments on the board? Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next case, please.
Yes, sir. Resonating case Z-72, Lubin A. Trevino, requests rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of a restaurant in landlot 202 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Windy Hill Road, east of Sandtown Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-72? For the record, so there's no one opposed.
Good morning, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. How are you? I am David Trevino. I represent the applicant Lubin Trevino. This is an existing property that we've had since nineteen ninety-one. The last tenants did not renew their business permits, so we have lost our zoning. So at this time, we're requesting that the zoning be changed from the existing neighborhood shopping district to NRC. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some stipulations that were asked of us, including a twenty-foot buffer to the residential side, some buffering to the front, removal of the barbecue pit, and a change of the coloring. Also, Ms. Cupid had some concern about a fence we had to the east of the property. That will be corrected. There's nothing new that's going to be added to the building. That'll be up to whoever rents the restaurant. So I, excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat. So I would ask this time that the Commissioners approve the application as submitted, along with all of the staff recommendations and any other recommendations you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, anybody in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Lead, Commissioner Cupid, if you lead our conversation, please.
Yes.
Have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate Attorney Trevino for considering my recommendations to repair either the fence or provide significant screening to the adjacent townhome that's close to the site. And I think that'll be beneficial, not only for the residents that are next door, but also for the business to help prevent anybody from trespassing onto the site. But I think this is a good use for this to come before us because that building has been sitting vacant for some time. And I think if we are able to change the color palette on the building, that it'll be a welcome change for all of those who are in the area. I did not receive any opposition with respect to this case. But one thing I did want to bring to your attention, Mr. Trevino, is that the property is located within an op, enterprise zone, excuse me, which you may be aware of. That was recently put together by Community Development and does provide some tax abatements and other economic incentives for that parcel. So with that, I'm making a motion to approve Z-72, to rezone to the NRC zoning category, subject to Planning Commission recommendations, staff comments, recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Do I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, guys. I guess that takes us to, no, that takes us to lot thirty-two.
That's correct.
Thank you.
LUP thirty-two, James Larry Barmore, requested land use permit for the purpose of an antique shop in landlot 337 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Powder Springs Road, east of Calaway Road. The applicant is present. Earlier, there were eleven people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please go forward, be sworn in.
House there at thirteen seventy-nine Powder Springs Road.
I'm sorry, we didn't get your name.
Larry Barmore.
Thank you, sir.
And I've owned the house about a year now. And I've been neighbors with the Scrippsers that lived there for forty-five years. And I live right behind it. My property joins that property. So I've lived there for forty-seven years. And when they passed away, I was able to buy the house. And I've been restoring it. And during all this time, I've learned that this house has got so much history behind it. The house was built by the McLemore family in nineteen hundred, and they run a dairy farm. I've got a picture here. They run that dairy farm until about nineteen fifty. The house then was remodeled, sold and remodeled. Those back then, they got indoor plumbing and electricity and all that stuff. And then the Scrippsers had bought it sometime after that. There's a lot of history with this house. And having a survey done on it, I found out that I thought was a driveway is not a driveway. And the surveyor tells me that it's the last remaining portion that he can find of the old Powder Springs Road from back in the eighteen hundreds, and it's untouched. And there's a lot of history here. I want to preserve it. I want to try to keep it up. And the only way I can do it and keep control of it, I think, would be to have a little antique shop there. I've dealt in antiques now for about fifty years. And I believe if you let me have my little antique shop, it'd give me control over keeping the house up and the grounds up. Otherwise, I'm going to have to rent the house. And we all know what's going to happen when it's rented. It's going to tear up. So that's what I'm asking for, if you'll let me have it.
Is that all your comments?
Pardon?
Have you concluded your comments?
I think so, unless you've got a question for me.
No, well, we'll get there if we do. Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, thank you, sir. We appreciate being here. Who is speaking in opposition? Please go forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Taylor. I'm an HOA officer with the enclave at Cheatham Hill Park. And I'm here to represent the neighborhood and myself to be adamantly opposed to that LUP thirty-two, which is that antique store in the residential area. The reasons that we oppose it, and I know that there's been some correspondence to Commissioner Gorm about that as well, is that this location is classified on the Future Land Use Map as a low-density residential area and lies directly across from our treasured Kennison Mountain Battlefield. I just handed over a document. It is a letter that's actually from the National Park Service and their superintendent. Two of our HOA members, Terry Johnson and Janice Killian, talked to the superintendent and got- talked to the superintendent and got this letter. She's unable to be here today. She's been out of the office for two weeks, and I understand she had several meetings planned today. But I wanted to just point this out, that the superintendent herself has said that the preferred position of the park is to protect the cultural landscape from further development that may adversely impact the character and cultural resources within the view shed of the park. This proposed location is literally right across from the green space of the park. It's a single-family homes, and the concern is that this would obviously affect the park's entrance. Another reason that we oppose it is that the county has invested over $400,000 of money in green space funds to purchase the corners around the Powder Springs, Cheatham Hill, Calaway corner in an effort so that it doesn't become developed. It's right in that intersection where Cold Farm House is still remaining. And so, we're trying to protect the integrity of this corridor, and obviously, that money was spent to protect the corridor. And this is literally three doors down. It's 300 feet away from that corner that we were trying to protect to begin with. The planning and zoning staff itself and your department recommended a denial of the application because of the concerns of other requests for noncompliant use of that space and that it may destabilize the residential area. So, the real possibility exists that this would establish a very dangerous precedent for future development of the Powder Springs Road corridor. And some of the problems challenging other areas in Cobb County have started similarly by allowing a certain land use change that have become more commercial instead of residential. So, certainly, there's a lot of reasons, there is a lot of support to oppose this, and I do hope that you consider an opposition to this to be a good thing for Cobb County and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Gorm, would you lead our conversation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of visuals that I would like to ask to be placed up there. We can start with the house, please. When I viewed the tape of the Planning Commission hearing and saw that lovely picture of that 1900s farmstead there, I thought, wow, that is worthy of preserving if we can in an appropriate way through zoning. However, this is the home that now sits on that parcel. It appears to be, I think it was built in 19, or the renovation's done in 1947, I believe. And it's very indicative of a lot of older homes that we have in that area, which are brick-sided, one-level homes, and it's in very nice condition. I have to say, Mr. Barmore, that you've done a great job in maintaining it. I know one of your reasons for wanting to run an antique shop out of this is to preserve the property. I don't quite get the connection here. We've got a 1947 home on the parcel, and to me, it probably would work out very nicely as a rental property. I know you've made comments about, well, it's very difficult to maintain the rental property. However, if you could put the other visual on there, I believe you live directly behind this property. And I would agree with you, if you lived in Florida, because we have a lot of cases of out-of-state landlords who own properties here and claim that they have difficulty keeping up with the rental properties. But more importantly, this corridor here is a very fragile corridor. There's intrusion of commercial. We have a park, lovely park, that needs to be protected. And also, more importantly in this area, we've got residential properties that deserve protection from appropriate zoning. And I'm afraid that if this were to be approved, the SLUP, it would be spot zoning, and it would set a precedent for this corridor. I know you purchased the property about a year ago and probably gave it consideration on how it might be used. Opening an antique shop is, in my opinion, not the best way to afford that protection to your neighbors and to that corridor, to the park. And I'm going to make a motion to deny the SLUP. Another important thing is that with a SLUP, the individual needs to be living in that residence or in that facility, and that's not the case. You live in a property directly behind it. So, as you can see, there are many reasons why this would be an inappropriate use at this time for that property. And I encourage you to maintain this property. And I don't see what reason why it shouldn't be maintained and be a beautiful 1947 house that I'm sure someone would enjoy living in. So, my motion is to deny SLUP 32.
Lot, lot.
Oh, UP, sorry, UP 32.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Commissioner. Any comments on the board? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now, that takes us to SLUP, S-O-U-P 17.
Yes, sir. S-LUP 17, Jubilee Christian Church International Glory and Tabernacle Incorporated, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a school, worship services, and pre-K program in landlot 717 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Massillon Road, east of Hopkins Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to S-LUP 17? Let's direct show there are two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
How many were opposed? Two, thank you. Well, there's a gentleman we haven't seen in a while. How are you, sir?
I'm very good. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Parks Huff, a law firm of Samslock and Huff and Bally, and I represent Jubilee Christian Church in relation to this special land use permit application on the aerial photograph that's on your projection. You will see the subject property. It's a 5.6 acre, or, excuse me, 5.7 acre tract of property that is in a U-shaped, that is, in the center of that U is a historic Macedonia Baptist church. So, this is on Macedonia Road oriented to the property. If you go just south, you're at the Walmart at Barrett Parkway in Powder Springs. That's Macedonia Road that parallels Powder Springs, if you will. The area, as I said, already has a historic Macedonia Baptist church. My client in 2007 obtained a special land use permit to operate a school on the property, and at the time was 4.6 acres. They've acquired an additional 1.1 acres and have asked to add worship service as a use. As the 4.6 acre tract came in, it was approved for the school, but it did limit the worship services. And so, what we've asked to, now that we've got 5.7 acres, is to actually have a, be able to have worship service in the property. The opposition that is here is the Gauze family. They're not directly adjacent to us, but they do own property in the area. And one of their biggest complaints is the fact that my client had worship service prior to approval of the special land use permit, and they're very upset that that occurred. I do want to make it very clear that we came forward to seek the special land use permit application not in response to a code enforcement complaint. It was brought forward because we wanted to come into compliance, not based upon a complaint to code enforcement. In fact, there still hasn't been a code enforcement complaint brought forward because we have come forward to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The main building is a 6,000, 6,600 square foot structure. Obviously, during the normal weekday times, there's a school that goes through second grade. And what we have a need for is worship service. And 90% of the students that go to that school are also involved in the church. And worship service, obviously, would be at times during the week that the church, the school's not in session, and on Sunday. What you have before you is a letter dated October 20th, 2014, which incorporates the Planning Commission's recommendations with my previous zoning stipulation letter and combines it into one letter. The staff reviewed this application, given the history of the area, given the history of the churches already in the area. They recommend approval. The Planning Commission, when they had an opportunity to look at it, recommended approval, subject to certain conditions. And those conditions are outlined in my letter dated September 20th and included therein. We would, there is a house on the subject property that was acquired with a 1.1 acres. We would limit that use of that house to residential use only for the church, like a parsonage situation. It won't be for rent, for, you know, just for profit purposes. And it would only be used for residential purposes. The, as you can see in the aerial photograph and from the site plan, the structure is very close to the adjacent property line. We would have a 35-foot buffer, planted buffer, along that property line, except for where the actual building would not allow for that 35-foot buffer. Ironically, if you look at the photograph, the playground is to the west of the building. So, placing the building close to the property line puts the outdoor play area further from the adjacent property. So, it actually ironically is beneficial. You will see just beyond the playground is a gravel area, and that would be paved for parking for the worship service. Our parking needs increase with allowing worship services here. And we have an agreement that that would be paved within 90 days to increase that parking. And you can see right now, we have an agreement with Macedonia Baptist Church to use some of their parking. Their parking lot backs up to our property, and they let us use the back row of parking because our parking needs are greater than their needs. And so, we would be adding additional parking. We have limited hours, the school hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:30. That's based upon my letter. The Planning Commission recommended 7:00 to 6:00. But my client, with parents picking up children from home, from work, and wanted to have that additional 30 minutes so that parents could easily pick their children up. And the worship services are limited from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The church use, and we would, the Planning Commission recommended 9:00. We've asked for 10:00 again because of the transition. When the worship service is over, people may not leave immediately. So, we've asked that to be extended to 10:00 p.m. The Planning Commission recognized that there was some opposition. And granted, the special land use permit limited initially to a 24-month period so we can make sure that we are in compliance and that we are not causing a problem for neighbors. And we are in agreement with that. I think that's an excellent way to ensure that we do not cause any problems for the neighbors. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. But we simply, this is an area that already has a church. Our property has been used for a school. We just want to add the worship service to that property. The, we've done so for a little while, and we want to be able to come in compliance with that. We are not being asked to come in compliance by code enforcement complaint, but our own volition. The Planning Commission, or, excuse me, the staff reviewed it, recommended approval of the application based upon all these factors. And again, the Planning Commission looked at it, the Planning Commission heard, had the opportunity to hear from the Gauzes, who also appeared at the Planning Commission meeting, and recommended approval with some additional conditions, which are contained in my letter dated October 20. So, I appreciate your time and your consideration, and be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Opposition, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please proceed.
Okay. My name is Marion Gauze. My husband and I have lived in Powder Springs since 1984, 2896 Macedonia Road. We are here today to object and voice concerns about the applicant's SLUP request. On November 27th, 2007, Mr. Huff's law office filed a letter of agreeable conditions with Cobb County Clerk's Office on behalf of Jubilee Christian Church. The original SLUP 15 application included a list of stipulations and conditions his client was willing to become a part of the original SLUP. The first condition clearly states, "The subject property will only be used for a private school and will not be used for a church or a daycare center." "The structure at 3,000 Macedonia Road is operated as a private school and a daycare. A sign on the road identifies only the school. Daycare is also displayed on the sign. There is no sign on the property or the building that identifies the structure as a church. Since the school's completion, JCCI Glory Tabernacle has openly held church services on Sundays and weekdays on a regular basis in the school building. Their JCCI website displays their church activity and shows their church address at 3,000 Macedonia Road. JCCI's online calendar shows service times and dates since August 26th, 2012. Not only has Jubilee been disingenuous with Mr. Huff, Cobb County, and our Powder Springs community, but with the use of the school as a church, this appears to be a code violation. Zoning Code Section 134, 271, Special Exceptions, requires three usable acres, excluding floodplain, for a school in addition to the five-acre requirement for a church, excluding floodplain, in an R-20 residential. This zoning would require eight usable acres for both a school and a church in an R-20 residential area. Jubilee currently has only 5.217 usable acres. The code also states, "A church may have an accessory daycare or school," but the code does not state a private school can have an accessory daycare or church. On October 7th, the Planning Commission recognized the fact that Jubilee's site is smaller than the eight acres required by code. Based on the fact that the neighboring properties are not fully developed, the Planning Board recommended approval with limitations. Yes, we are fortunate to live on 54 acres of undeveloped land with only a few homes. As property owners and taxpayers, we would hope that zoning codes are tools to help protect and respect our rights. By allowing Jubilee to operate a private school, church, pre-K, and a daycare on 5.217 usable acres and not the required eight is not protecting our rights. We strongly object to Mr. Porter's words, and I quote, "There's some breathing room even though we don't have the full acreage." Jubilee does not have zoning's requirement of eight usable acres. I hope the Board will respect and follow the zoning codes." My husband and I today object to Jubilee's SLUP 17 based on these following items. One, the school building has been used as a church since its completion. Jubilee's apparent use of the building for worship appears to be a code violation due to insufficient acreage in an R-20 residential, and more importantly, a violation of a stipulation in Jubilee's original SLUP. Number two, Jubilee's apparent violation of openly using the school for worship generated parking issues with parking in fire lanes, on the grass, and in a gravel construction lot. A code enforcement officer did visit 3,000 Macedonia Road on Sunday, August 10th. A rapport from Mr. Lanham's office should be available for review. Number three, open records from the Fire Marshal's Office show only two certificates of occupancy on file. Both are for education. Jubilee Christian does not have a certificate of occupancy on file with the Fire Marshal's Office for an assembly occupancy. Number four, Division Chief Jay Westbrook confirmed that the Fire Marshal's Office does not have a certificate of occupancy for a daycare at 3,000 Macedonia Road in Powder Springs. Mr. Westbrook confirmed this is a violation and does need to be corrected. In addition, an open records request indicates that Jubilee's last annual inspection by the Fire Marshal's Office was April 26th, 2013, almost one and a half years ago. Number five, Jubilee's use of the property for a school and worship has affected the quiet enjoyment of our surroundings. Playground hours begin at 10:30 with screaming throughout the day. Summer noise is even worse. During the first week of September, kids were screaming on the playground until 8:00 p.m. Kristi Trombetti addressed the playground noise with Mr. Huff. Mr. Huff agreed to school hours between, during the week, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ms. Trombetti confirmed kids would be picked up at 6:00 p.m. Planning recommendations only limit hours of operation for the church from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Planning recommendations did not limit or specify school hours. Planning recommendations did not limit or specify school hours. This past Friday night, the school was having an outside event, and the music and speakers were very loud at times. Does Jubilee need, or did they have a permit to use the school after hours? There need to be specific limitations of usage in a residential area for a school. Number six, this year Jubilee apparently did new construction onto the back of the school without, that was not approved or permitted by the county. The county became aware of the construction and a stop work order issued. Apparently, a survey plat made Jubilee aware that they had built onto the neighbor's property. A multi-level concrete slab was 14.32 feet east of Jubilee's current property line. A corner of a new sidewalk was 15.87 feet east of Jubilee's property line, and a corner of the sidewalk was 1.59 feet east of their property line. Hence Jubilee had built on someone else's property without permission or knowledge. You can see the GIS mapping photos dated 2012 and 2014 for comparison of pre and post-construction views. After October 7 hearing, my husband and I spoke to Mr. Huff and Jubilee's pastor. The pastor told us the new construction was a classroom. This unpermitted construction was not a patio, as Mr. Huff, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Porter were apparently led to believe and made reference to. Number seven, Pastor Larry Bailey of Macedonia Baptist Church confirmed that the sign at the driveway entrance identifying Jubilee School was built without his permission on the Macedonia Baptist Church property, not on Jubilee's own property. Number eight, a metal link fence is apparently still on the neighbor's property. Mr. Terry questioned, "Is it a school? Is it a daycare? Is it a school? Is it all three?" Mr. Huff told the planning board Jubilee is really a church with a daycare program with a couple of grades added on to it. That portion of it is very small. If you look at it from that respect, it's not much of a request at all. Mr. Huff, we disagree. Jubilee is making a huge request and asking the board to approve their SLUP 17. Jubilee has violated their original SLUP 15 by using the school for worship and not having sufficient acreage for both a school and worship. They apparently are not compliant with certificates of occupancy with the Fire Marshal's Office. They apparently did unpermitted and unapproved new construction at the school and built onto the neighbor's property. The planning board expressed concerns with Jubilee's dependability, respect of the rules, and just not being a good neighbor. We hope the board does not lose sight of the original SLUP 15 agreement. Jubilee was only approved for a private school and not for church use or a daycare. Yes, May 2009 Jubilee SLUP 7 requested the county to allow the school to include infants through three-year-olds. The SLUP 7 appears to have been deleted to a 24-month land use permit in 2010. At the end of the 24-month period, why was Jubilee not required to renew their land use permit with the Board of Commissioners? Code Section 134-36 states, "The BOC may issue temporary land use permits in uniquely located areas." Item D, number two, refers to a church with an accessory daycare facility, pre-K, daycare, child development center, and the like. Jubilee Prep Academy is a private school and not a church with a daycare. Zoning Code leads one to believe that private schools are under guidelines for special land use permits and not land use permits. Our zoning codes enforcement followed is, appears in this situation, the codes are being revised to fit the needs of the applicant. In conclusion, Code Ordinance Section 134-137, Item G states, "A holder of a special land use permit may be subject to suspension or revocation via a show cause hearing conducted by the Board of Commissioners if the owner is found in violation of any of the Board of Commissioners' stipulations for the special land use permit." Jubilee's use of the school for worship has been a clear violation of a stipulation agreed to as part of their original SLUP. Jubilee has not respected their agreement with Cobb County and their community, and hence we respectfully ask the BOC to deny their SLUP 17. If the BOC does approve Jubilee's SLUP, we certainly feel justified based on the applicant's past actions to request the board to include additional limitations and stipulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I went over.
That's okay. Not a concern. Mr. Huff, you have about a minute if you'd like to comment.
I, I do think it's, you know, ironic that, that actually the complaints that I heard had to do with the operation of the church use of the property and the children playing outside, not really the, excuse me, the school use of the property, not really the church use of the property, other than some parking issues that we have resolved. So I'm not, and I think the, the Gauses are very familiar with the property and have been for years because Mr. Gauz was the contractor who helped construct the building, was part of the contractors that worked on the, on the project. So they've been familiar with the property and only now have decided that they have some complaints and have never voiced a complaint to us in the past, nor have made a complaint to code enforcement about any, any issues in the past. We recognize that the original SLUP did not allow for worship services, and so we are asking for that to be added as we have requested. Your staff has looked at, recommended approval. Planning Commission recommended approval. I think their 24-month limitation, other limitations are very appropriate. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold the curious now closed. Commissioner Cupid, would you lead our conversation, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I recognize that Ms. Gauz went through a very lengthy and detailed analysis of the subject property, much more diligently than I've seen from many that come here for any District Four property. You provided a number of concerns that have shown some missteps with respect to the applicant, perhaps some technical missteps on behalf of the county. I can't speak to why a lot that was provided for two years did not come back before the board. And I believe there was something else that I, that's just not very clear to me. It looks like they were operating beyond their stipulation. Your discovery or you bringing that to our attention allowed us to see that. There were a number of concerns that you shared that I was going to address, and one of them, which I think was most significant, which was recently brought to my attention, which pertained to the fire code and wanted to know if somebody was here from the Fire Marshal's Office, hi, if you may approach.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Rock Toler. I represent the Cobb County Fire Marshal.
Okay, thank you for being here. Mr. Toler?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Rock? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. May you speak to the findings that Ms. Gauz shared with respect to this property?
As far as a certificate of occupancy?
Yes. She stated that the codes pertain to the actual school and not to worship, and also that evaluation of the fire code wasn't done for the past year and a half, and I don't know the frequency of which that is done for all.
They are typically, the, the annual inspections are on a yearly basis. I don't know what the cycle is on this particular business. It could be possibly that we were ahead last year and we're behind this year, possibly. But there is a certificate of occupancy for education. The assembly would be accessory to the education.
Okay.
It does meet currently for both assembly and education.
I'm sorry, the church does meet for both?
The, the structure does, yes, ma'am. The way it's laid out for.
Okay.
Assembly and education. They will need a certificate of occupancy for a daycare if they're going to be licensed by, right from the start.
Okay, so right now, without them operating, well, they're not supposed to be operating a daycare, and I guess that's another question I have for the applicant of whether or not they're doing that at this time. Did you walk the property inside or just?
No, ma'am, I did not, but the Fire Marshal, Jay Westbrook, he did.
Was there any evidence that a daycare is in operation versus a school?
He, he did not speak of such.
Okay.
But he, he must have been led to believe that there was, I don't know if the, the playground or the applicant mentioned something about a daycare, but.
Okay.
And isn't there signage indicating daycare also that I thought at the entranceway?
No.
Yes, I, I did hear that as well. Thank you, that's all questions I have pertaining to fire. I do have some questions pertaining to staff. There was either Attorney Atkins or Mr. Peterson. There were some questions as to whether or not it was appropriate for a church to have an accessory daycare versus there'd be a school that has an accessory worship program. Is, can, does that make or break with respect to what's allowed on a site?
Commissioner Cupid, it's pretty common for a church to have a daycare use on the property, and I'd probably guess a majority of churches in the county do have daycare programs of some type or another.
Okay.
As far as a private school, there are a number of churches in the school, in the county that have private schools through SLUPS.
Is there a violation of anything technical with this request, with them asking for a church to be added on to an existing school?
If the board approves this, this request, then it would be legal. It's my understanding, though, that they currently are not operating legally because they have a church there which is not allowed per the conditions, and the conditions also do, do not allow a daycare at this point in time. There was a land use permit in the past to have a temporary daycare use, but that, that permit has expired.
And they didn't renew it?
They did not renew it.
Okay, and that's on the applicant's onus to come before the board to renew, not for the board to go out to the site to?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. The problem I have, I have a few problems with this particular case. Certainly, again, there are a number of missteps here, and with zoning, constituents fallback is our code. That's what they have their confidence in, that that's going to be adhered to. And Ms. Gauz spoke about that very clearly and her dependence on that. But I have some difficulty with denying this application due to the practicality of what's going on. The site did come before us because they actually wanted to clean up what they were doing. This was not brought before us as a result of a violation. And in essence, since the school has been zoned since 2007, I'm hearing from opposition that they have been violating that zoning. But that would not have come before us unless they came to try to clean that up, which is a step in the right direction. I think that planning, the planning commission heard Mrs. Gauz's complaints very loud and clear, and there are a lot of concerns that what is going to give the community faith that the applicant is going to follow these set of stipulations that follow this zoning? And I'm hoping with the help of you going through the pain of this process that you'll understand that this is not, these stipulations are not advisory, that, I mean, they are to be complied with. And somebody could have easily called, and this could have been prompted via a code violation, and it just wasn't in this instance. For that reason, I'm supportive of us limiting the time on the SLUP. Some SLUPS are approved without a time limit, but because confidence needs to be inspired that the, that the applicant will do what the applicant says they will do, I support the time limit on this particular property. I want to address some concerns too that were shared or that I believe would be addressed if this were moving forward. There were some concerns shared about, and forgive me because I'm not going necessarily in the order that was shared with opposition, but there were some concerns shared about noise on the property due to children screaming during the day. And while a quiet enjoyment of the property is certainly of surrounding property owners is, is, is a right of those property owners, I have to share that those property owners were very much aware that a daycare was being created here with children. And if any child, child is like my child, they, they make noise. And to say that these children are making noise, which is a, which I think many of us find inherent in small kids, after not, not only knowing about the zoning, but actually helping to create the building itself and the daycare itself, I don't quite understand that because, and had to be known that if you're helping to construct a daycare, noises from children may emanate from it. And going from 50 to 75 children with a younger, with a younger audience or customer base for the church, I, I think would not elevate the amount of noise since we're looking at adding infants to, I think, what's already approved for those of preschool age. I do believe that there's a significant variance that's being asked to go from eight acres to less than six acres for this site. But I must agree with the planning commissioner that in looking around the property that there is significant, there is a significant tree buffer. And in his communication with the church, Maced, forgetting the name of it, the church that sits right in front, I think it's Macedonia Baptist, they actually have talked about Jubilee being a very good neighbor to their church, and I think that Jubilee has the opportunity to open the gate for Macedonia since they come in early, they actually have the key for Macedonia's lot, and I, for them being the closest neighbor, they seem to have had no opposition to this case being brought forward. And I did not hear from them with respect to any issues with the signage that was shared. I know that I've had a case come before me with respect to putting a church in a residential area that did not meet the acreage requirement, but in that particular case, there was no buffer around that church, and residents would have been very close to the activity that's there. And here, there's a lot of vacant and open land between the church and surrounding property. I believe the church is interested in eventually acquiring some more property, so I'm, I'm not opposed to considering the variance. There was some concern with respect to parking on gravel and in a fire lane, and I believe that a stipulation, that stipulations three and eight in the applicant's letter referred to submission of a parking plan and to paving out the parking lot 90 days prior to, or 90 days, within 90 days of possible approval. I do believe in one stipulation I may add that I did not see is that a CO was definitely going to need to be required prior to operating. And perhaps would like to ask the applicant if they can come forward so I can speak to what's the current use of the site.
The, the, I think the, Mr. Toler said that we do have a CO that would cover assembly and child education, so I think, I think we fit under, under that, but I, I, we certainly agree with the, that the certificate of occupancy for our use should be ensured to be updated.
Okay.
And I also meant to add, I, I think no outdoor speakers, there was a comment about no outdoor speakers. At first I heard of that, I would have put that in my stip letter, that we would not have any outdoor speakers. She was, said that there were some last week, so I'd, I'd be glad to add that, I would add that.
Okay.
Since we're speaking about COs, is there a CO for operating daycare?
I don't believe so.
There, there's none, but there is daycare provided?
There is not daycare that is licensed by the, right from the start, which requires the separate daycare license.
But there is daycare, and there's no CO.
I, I cannot speak to that. I don't know whether there is a CO as to that. And I, I actually don't know whether there's a different.
And there hasn't been a fire inspection.
I don't know whether there's a different CO for daycare versus education.
Yeah, I mean, and, and maybe that's something you can refer to your client to, but again, a lot of what we're reviewing has to speak to not only the community's level of confidence that you're adhering to stipulations, but our level of confidence too, which I think Commissioner Gorm is getting to. And part of that hinges on whether or not there is, is there an actual daycare that's operating on the site? I'm sorry, Ms. Gauz, that's a question for the gentleman operating the program, yes, I mean, if you don't?
Just, just hang on a minute, okay? And get this back to the center here for a minute. The question, the question is, is there a CO currently issued for the property? And what is its permitted use?
In current use.
I, I don't have a copy of the CO. I think the Fire Marshal could, could state to that, but we do have a CO. We have been inspected every year. But we do have a CO, we have been inspected every year. And when they come out and inspect, they see what the use is. And they ensure that the CO that the fire marshal has is in compliance with what they're seeing.
Okay, what is that CO? What is that CO issued for?
What does it cover?
I don't have a copy.
Who does, who knows?
The building department.
Ma'am, you're not associated with the, you're the, so you're the applicant's attorney and you don't know what the CO is for, that they currently hold?
I do not have a copy of the certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Is your client here?
Yes, my client is here.
Okay, can we speak with him, please?
And then I would also like the fire marshal to come back up, please, too, please.
Sir, please. You'll need to be sworn in first, sir. Can we have your name for the record, please?
Olajide Opele.
Could you do, spell that for us, please? Thank you, sir. Do you have a, currently have a CO for the property?
We do currently have a CO, sir, yes.
And what does it cover?
It covers education, says.
Education only?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so no, you don't have, you do not have a CO for daycare?
When we apply for the.
Do you have a, do you have a CO for a daycare operation?
We do not have a CO for daycare operation.
Okay, do you have a CO for any use other than education currently?
We do have a permission to do infant, to, the land use permit which we applied for. When we applied for the land use permit, we had to go to Bradford Start, which is the Georgia Department that approves education.
I understand that.
And before they came in to approve us to take infants to foyer, they, we have to go through the fire marshal. So we submitted at that time the plan showing the nursery, the creeps, to the fire marshal. So we went all through that, through the fire marshal to get that approval before Bradford Start would approve us for that.
Okay.
And since we stopped, since our land use permit expired, we've not had infant at our facility.
Okay.
Never.
Okay, you're going, you're going beyond what we asked you, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions for us?
I'm losing my train of thought, no, I'm fine. I recognize that the Bradford from the Start program would require a CO for daycare usage. So I believe we're okay there.
Thank you, sir.
At least I am, I don't know about the other, can't speak for any other commissioners.
Another Commissioner Gorm wanted to speak to the fire marshal again. Is that okay?
It's probably not necessary because what has been discussed is there's no childcare. There's no infant care provided, or daycare provided at this facility? I think that was my original question. I'm just concerned because if we have babies there and we don't have an up-to-date fire inspection, that concerns me more than children's voices out on a playground.
The infants were part of the land use permit from 2009. And since that expiration, there have not been infants there. As terms of what we count as daycare, there is, you know, two through, is it two through? Starting at two?
For school purposes, for school purposes. My other question while you're up there, there was obviously some construction taking place. It looked like an additional classroom. Were the proper permits, the building permits, issued for that addition to the, to the school?
There were not any permits acquired and there was a patio that was, that was being poured. And when the surveys were done for this application, it was pointed out that it was over the property line. Those were sought off prior to the survey being signed by the surveyor. And it was removed.
And so what we see on the overhead, that's all on the property of the school?
It has been, what was going over, the concrete that was going over the property line has all been removed. I think, I think that Mrs. Gau has pointed out, and she's correct, that there's a fence that still needs to be cut off that goes over in that area, but the concrete was all removed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think where we're at, or where we are, is that there was an LUP for an educational facility that included infants. I don't know what you're educating infants of. Then that elapsed and infants were no longer allowed to come to the facility, but the minimum age is now two. There is a CO in place for the purpose of an educational facility for the site now. There was some renovations being done that were not permitted and encroached another property. The concrete associated with that expansion has been sought off to be within the confines of the applicant's property, but there still exists a fence outside of the property's boundaries that was installed or is being maintained by the applicant. So that's where we are. And so you have in front of you whether or not to extend an LUP to allow for the education to reignite, if you would, to include infants, assuming you get the appropriate approvals, and to allow for worshippers up to 160 in 24 months. Did I misphrase anything there?
You didn't misphrase it, but if this were brought forward today, and this is the reason why I think staff recommend approval. If this were brought forward today without all the history, it would be simply brought forward as a church use, which with almost six acres would, is allowed. And then you would allow through kindergarten, because that's the pertinent use to a church. So really, the only difference is, we're talking about, in the letter, limits the schoolchildren up to second grade. So all we're adding is first and second grade to, and I think that's the reason why the staff.
I guarantee you, if this had been brought in as a new application, it would have been a lot easier.
Yeah.
But it's because of the history that we just have to understand it. So we can't really look at it isolated. But I understand what you're trying to say, or part, I really understand. So hopefully, we made that as clear as mud for you.
I have some questions, too.
Let me, Mr. Cupid, you want to go ahead?
I defer, go ahead.
For the daycare, you.
There is no daycare.
It's just a school? No daycare?
No daycare.
Okay, well, then what was the increase from 25?
From 50 to 75.
Fifty to 75, right now, there are 40, I think 48 children enrolled.
In the school?
Correct.
So let's not use the word daycare anymore.
Please.
I know, that's.
Where?
And it's on the website.
Okay. Yes, and that's what was problematic, they look as if they were open to do it and it didn't come into fruition is what I'm gathering with that language. And at the end of the day, again, this comes down to doing the things that you set out to do. I mean, the only reason that these stipulations are in the application is because they were requested by the applicant. And then for not to be adhered to was creating more problems for today. Now, I understand that there are some good faith attempts to clean up things that are going on. Because of the amount of discussion here and concern, I'm going to even ask that we limit the SLUP time from 24 months to a 12-month window. And honor some additional requests that were in the applicant's letter. And also, I'm going to add a stipulation and with respect to the CO, which is probably already inherent in the zoning process, but I'm just going to spell it out so it can be clear as mud. Bear with me, because taking some notes here as well. This is for the clerk's attention, too. And looking at the planning commission's recommendation, I'm going to strike the second stipulation, the second, yeah, the second stipulation which refers to a letter of agreeable conditions dated October 7th. I'm going to refer to the October 20th email sent from the applicant. Going to the, there's a bullet that refers to limiting the permit to 24 months. That's bullet 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. I'm going to limit that from 24 months to 12 months. They're asking for infants for this one. Then I'm going to go to bullet number 8, 9, 10, 11, which refers to the hours of operation. And I'm going to extend the hours of the operation for the church, not the school, per the planning commission recommendations and go from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. With my concern is that most church services end at 9:00 PM. And I'm afraid that if there's just some overflow in the parking lot, because there's a lot of scrutiny on this, I do not want code enforcement to be bombarded at 9:01 because people have not driven out of the site yet. But this is with the understanding that activity is dying down. We're expecting for the property to be vacant by 10:00 PM. Then I'm going to refer to the attorney letter dated October 20th. I just want to highlight and not change stipulation number five, which would have the school operation to 6:30 PM as opposed to 6:00 PM, which was discussed in the planning commission, but it's not reflected in their stipulation. So it's just me making you publicly aware of extending that to 6:30 PM. Also, just so there's no conflict, again, pointing the attention that the applicant's letter and stipulation 13 specifies hours from 7:00 AM for the church, not for the school, but the church from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And us continuing with that. There's two other stipulations, and forgive me as I try to craft this extemporaneously here, but there was some comments with respect to the fence that's around the church and it being on the adjacent property. And I probably may, I'm going to lean on staff for some help with this stipulation. But I would like some type of letter or proof that the property owner that has this fence on it is okay with that fence being on their property.
Commissioner, one of the, one of the issues there is, you know, when we, this may sound simplistic, but it's true. When you're doing a zoning on this property, you know, that's another property.
Okay, so let them bring that.
And you might consider a stipulation of some sort to make sure that gets removed or something, but.
I would just like to encourage the applicant attorney and the applicant to please communicate with that property owner so that doesn't come before us. And which may also be implied, but just to acquire for all necessary COs for requested operations be obtained prior to the specified, prior to operation or that specified operation. Which sounds a little bit cryptic, but there's like three different operations going on here. I get the infant care, the church, and the school. So that the appropriate, just obtain the appropriate COs to operate in the requested capacity or prior to operating in that capacity. That was a tongue twister, but I'm going to try to stay emotion based off of all that was shared, unless there's any additional comments.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Gorm and I are sitting over here. Right, in 2007, the church was granted a SLUP. For a whole list of things that are listed in, in your books. In 2009, the church came back. The SLUP was removed and deleted to a land use permit.
Okay.
For 12 months.
For 12 months. So in 2010, that expired. They have nothing on the property right now. Okay?
I guess there's something.
It's not in here.
Can I, because that confused me when I read that too. The, and I was not involved in the 2009 action. In 2009, a special land use permit was, if my understanding is correctly, a special land use permit was applied for, they deleted the 2009 request to a land use permit. They weren't, they weren't removing the 2007 special land use permit. That, that, that was my understanding.
You can have two SLUPs, you can. But, all right.
So the 2007 was still in place, it was not removed?
Well, yes and no, okay? Because one of the stipulations here in the 2009 motion approved by the commissioner said they deleted it, the SLUP to a LUP. It said, "All previous stipulations of SLUP 15 to remain not in conflict, remain in effect." They did not keep the SLUP in place. They simply kept the stipulations from the SLUP in place. There is not a SLUP on the property. Simply the stipulate, the stipulations from the special land use permit in 2007 were carried over to the land use permit that the board deleted it to in 2009. They did, the SLUP went away. Because what happened was they came in to amend, it says, requesting a special land use permit for the purpose of amending previous stipulations. They were amending the SLUP that was in place. The board removed the SLUP because the actions that they were doing went from a land use permit. There is nothing on the property at this time.
I would, yes, I would, go ahead, Chairman.
No, go ahead.
In my sidebar conference, yes.
I was going to try to stop everybody from talking a lot, just go.
Well, I mean, I was just, you asked for other comments.
No, I appreciate that. Just due to all that's been revealed today and discussed, I think it's best to hold this for 30 days and let's clean this up so it can just be presented better, if that's okay with everyone here.
I think everybody agrees with it.
I agree, and I think there needs to be understanding, though, that this application may have to be withdrawn and refiled. Because if indeed, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but if indeed we find out that there is no SLUP on the property, it has to be re-advertized for what exactly it is they're coming in for. It would be basically a new zoning.
I would defer to legal or.
We'll figure that out, we'll figure that out. Mr. Huff, with all your expertise in zoning, I'm certain you can help lead us through a path that's clearer and brighter for all, correct?
Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing to muddy the waters. But we now have a concrete pad that is probably in, on the property line with, which is a violation of our building setbacks and whatever else that I think also needs to be addressed.
I agree, yes, well, the part that's on the adjacent property that's been removed, but it's still, yes, oh yeah, the setback certainly. And this is just, to throw another wrench in this, and this is more anecdotal than anything. I just find it very ironic that the predominant complaint is from the actual company that constructed the facility. It's just, there's not an arm's length relationship there. And it's just, it's just, I don't know, it just causes some questions.
So we have a motion to hold this for 30 days, the second by Commissioner Hott. Call the question, motion carries five zero. Okay. Sharon, help us with that one, Parks. So we're going to Z 60.
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z 60, West Cobb Senior Living LLC. Request a rezoning from R 20 to R 70 for the purpose of a senior living community in landlines 331 and 332 of the 20th district. The property is located on the southwest side of Dallas Highway, northeast side of Kennesaw View Drive, west of West Antown Road. The applicant is present. Is anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 60? Is everyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 60? Let the record show there's no one opposed. You got two opposed? Let the record show there's two people opposed.
I like the first comment.
So we are at Z 60, right?
No churches, no daycare.
I'm trying to clear my, I'm trying to compartmentalize. So we're at Z 60. This is a held case, we've come back for a second. This is a pickup of where we left off last time. For the record, is there anyone here in opposition to Z 60? There are two, okay, I just want to make sure. I wasn't paying attention when John was calling it, so I apologize. So, Mr. Huff, let's get this one going here.
Good evening, almost. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the Law Firm, Samzlarke and Huff in Valley, and I represent West Cobb Senior Living in relation to this rezoning application. As noted, this case was heard last month and was continued to address one specific issue. So I'm not going to rehash the entire case because I think we had a pretty good dialogue last time. But obviously, we're here to answer any questions you have. This is a property on Dallas Highway. And one of the most telling parts of this case is the fact that we've got a very large zoning on Dallas Highway, and we have two people here. That's pretty remarkable. We've had two cases earlier today with a whole lot of folks involved off Paul Samuel Road and in East Cobb. The reason for that is this is a well-put-together, well-reasoned case. At this time, I'm going to step aside and let Mike Brown step up. He is the principal for the entity, was also the principal in the development in East Cobb. And he's going to address the specific concerns that Commissioner Gorm had about the visual view and the landscaping along Dallas Highway. So I'm going to step aside and let him speak for just a second.
Chairman, ladies, commissioners, thank you. Again, my name is Mike Brown. I'm one of the owners of the applicant. From our September 16th meeting, a concern was brought up by Commissioner Gorm in that our cottages in our community had a uniformed or a row look. And so we have listened to those concerns and have tried to address it in three different ways. And what you have on the screen is the new land plan. What we did, first of all, excuse me. Parks, I can't talk that quick, and I will be quick. What, that was the original plan, Parks. Excuse me.
Not a problem.
What we, what we did was, and the three elements to take care of the concern was, one was we reduced the number of units. We went down to, dropped it by four units. Two on the Dallas, there it is. There was nine units facing Dallas Highway. Now there are seven units. On the rear Kennesaw View, we dropped it by an additional two units. And what the purpose of that was, was to, for us hopefully, is to save some specimen trees or be in a position to separate the houses and get more distance between the houses. By taking out those two lots on each side, you're picking up 120, roughly 120 feet additional space to be put there. So, on the rear, we're going to do the exact same thing. We're taking out two lots. What we're trying to do is a walking entrance, that entrance that will tie in to the sidewalk that we have, that we are building in there. And that will also, with the extra space, give us more room in between the cottages. It's worth noting, when we designed the site plan, I would have changed what we did, is we showed the average size of every house. The average size of every house was 1,650. So it gave it an appearance of a uniform. If you go to the next slide, what we're trying to do is show reality. And what reality is, that the seniors who are going to choose to live here do not want their home to look like their next-door neighbors. And what we have here, and it still doesn't do a good job of depicting the picture, but Caldwell Klein, who's done a lot of successful projects here in town, has shown what we're going to do. Those houses range from 1,600 to 3,300, down to 1,700, those four. And you really have a difficult time seeing the variety. But the houses are going to have different sizes. They're going to have their individual landscape and their individual hardscapes. So, if you go to the next slide, real quickly, Parks. Thank you. I just want to mention, those are the standard-sized houses. And we believe, once we're done with this, this is going to be a traditional neighborhood. And to the right of those two houses is a park. And 48% of this property is green space. So we feel our density in green space is exceptional. But the best indication of the future is what you've done in the past. This is the replica of a double stack. This is roughly the 3,200 square foot house. It has two flats in it. First flat walk-in off the street. Second is in an elevator. But this has really, really, you know, has worked. Bottom line is, people love this home. And this model is just part of it, but we also want to do the smaller-sized homes. If you go to the next slide, again, variety of roof lines, variety of materials. We had a lot of input when we did this originally. And we listened to that input, and it turned out to be very successful. But I think hopefully you can see that we have pride in it. So that's our double stack. If you go to the next picture, third area of concern was we tried to increase the landscaping. Landscaping is very important. If we want a residential neighborhood, we start with landscaping. What we did in this picture was just showing the maturity of the trees. But the point I want to make to you is, I've heard comments that people driving down Dallas Highway don't want to see our houses. The people who live in our homes don't want to look out onto a highway. So we've got to really dress the landscaping up. If you go to the next one, this is just a representative model. I thought the white little blocks are the sidewalks. Then there's the buffer. Then there's the fencing. Then there's the ground cover, the hardwoods, the roadway, and then the landscaping of the house. So there is a pretty significant buffer in that middle picture. We hope to save that tree. But again, I heard today, a picture's worth a thousand words. So the next slide, that's what the interior of our project looks like. That landscaping we put in for the interior because it had to have the same kind of feel. The next slide, that is just looking straight on. But that's what I just described in that picture before. You know, sidewalk, buffer, ground cover, fencing, hardwoods. To me, that is very residential, and that's part of our model. The next slide, that's looking east, going down the road. So you have just a better view. If you go to the next slide, that's looking to the west. But again, we believe from the roadside, it will have the appearance of a residential lot. So, next, okay. It wouldn't be right if I didn't finish with Bob Elliott's picture, because it means something to us. But I'll leave you with this. I really believe that, and I didn't get a chance to address this, we're trying to do something unique. It's not anywhere in the senior community. Some people may want to choose to live in the townhouse. But this is my own house. It's designed for all the needs I have. No maintenance, no yard work. And our neighborhood that's going to be a part of West Cobb is something that seniors don't have an option in other communities. And we think they'll be thrilled to have it. And I thank you for your time. I know it's been a long day.
Thank you, not a problem. Again, this is a continued case, and we were asked to address the visual aspect along Dallas Highway. As you can tell, the generous landscaping that was provided in East Cobb that would be provided here is detailed with the slides and detailed in my letter dated October 15, 2014. To go back, I mean, this is a significant project to be able to assemble all these properties together. And to be able to have the different uses or the different housing elements within this project is very unique and will create a wonderful, state-of-the-art senior project that will be proud for West Cobb. You have the single-family cottages. You have the garden homes. You have the congregate care. And then that is anchored by the assisted living building. And this entire community will function together. The services that will be provided are critical for the whole community to be successful. They have a swimming pool in this assisted living building. They have dining services. And so it allows for seniors to live in their own community, to age in their own community, and to be very proud of that community. And it's the, very unique to be able to have this size of a project. Or, I know the opposition's going to talk about density and concern about density. This project is less dense than the project in East Cobb by a unit per acre. We are half to a third less dense than your typical assisted living building. Because your typical assisted living building is sitting on two to three acres. This is a 23-acre complex with more than most of the property is green space. That's walkable green space. And one of the things that we did when we went back is we tied the sidewalks along Kennesaw View Road and Dallas Highway interconnectivity through our site. So we're very proud of this project. And we ask you to follow the staff recommendation and that you follow the Planning Commission recommendation for approval.
Thank you, sir. Opposition, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Gamble, and I'm president in People Looking After Neighborhoods. We continue to support the concept that is proposed by Sterling Estates. However, the side setbacks between the cottages and garden homes remain at five to 10 feet per unit. Per RSL Section 134 203.211T, quote, "There shall be a minimum setback of 15 feet between buildings." Minimum setbacks may be increased by the Board of Commissioners based on existing conditions such as topography, track size, et cetera, in order to provide compatibility with adjacent residential uses," end quote. Plan requests that the county continue upholding the 15-foot minimum setback requirements between homes located on Dallas Highway and increase to 25 feet along Kennesaw View Drive as the adjacent properties are established R 20 residential. Please note that per number 18 in the letter of stipulations, it states 13 feet between independent cottages. Yet the site plan states minimum setback of 10 feet. The site plan should be corrected to reflect setbacks of 15 feet per code. Section 134 203.1 and 211A, quote, "Shall be subject to the site plan submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners," end quote. The applicant is also requesting two potentially significant changes to the site plan presented here today and is requesting the changes to be approved by the district commissioner alone. The first request is to have the option to exchange cottages for garden homes and vice versa to meet market demand with the approval of the district commissioner. And stipulation number two states the congregate care component can increase by 20 units with a commensurate reduction in the assisted living units. While the next sentence states that the total number of residential units shall not exceed 222 units, since this application is site plan-specific, this request exceeds what has been defined as a minor modification. If an alternate plan is desired, the new site plan should come back to the board as an other business item. Per Section 134 203.211S, the maximum building height is two stories. The double stacks, there's no reference that this will adhere to that code. Per Section 134 203 12A1, plan requests that the clubhouse adhere to the guidelines set forth in the code with the maximum height of one story or 15 feet. The site plan dated 10/13/14 shows many interior roads adjacent to existing residential homes. With other RSLs that have been developed in the area, the county has not allowed roads, except for entrances, to be adjacent or within the buffer of adjoining properties. Plan requests that the interior roads that are adjacent to parcels on Kennesaw View Drive be reconfigured to lessen the impact on adjacent neighbors. It is our understanding that an adjacent resident had a conversation with Mr. Huff and also Mr. Hobie regarding creating a berm along Dallas Highway with landscaping, and also concerns regarding ventilation from the kitchen and the potential impact on adjacent neighbors. No reference to these concerns have been addressed in the letter of stipulations. Plan requests, plan and the residents welcome the proposed strolling of West Cobb. However, we would like the code to be followed regarding setbacks, building heights, and the interior roads reconfigured for less of an impact on adjacent neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman and Cobb County Commissioners. My name is Bill Thomas, and I represent the Still Waters Homeowners Association. We're a subdivision located south of Dallas Highway, approximately a mile, and west off of West Sandtown Road. We are downstream from the proposed senior living development. We are not opposed to this development. We are not opposed to this project. We do, however, have some significant concerns. We are concerned about the plan as presented and the zoning designated change for the following reasons. The first one is density. The density of the units, R 20 with 41 units being increased to 222 units, an increase of 181 units, results in a net density of 9.5 units per acre, plus 215, possibly more, parking spaces. Our second concern is the amount of impervious painted paved areas. Out of the 23.67 acres of available land, 14.84 acres will be pavement and other hardscapes. That's over 60% of the usable acreage. Cobb County Code is 55% for green space. This results in our third concern, and that is stormwater management. The runoff will flow into Mud Creek and downstream into Still Waters Lake. The Still Waters community already has a 30-year-old dam and drainage controls that were damaged by the builder of the Stonebridge community. I think you're all very familiar with what went on there in the resulting lawsuit. The developer of the senior living community is requesting 20-foot buffers, not the 50-foot buffers required by Cobb County. This will increase the runoff for those who are downstream, and that would be ourselves, Still Waters. For Still Waters, this means it's going to be like having a Walmart parking lot upstream from us. And when we have a massive rainstorm, in spite of retention ponds or whatever the eco-friendly term is for the pond, that water is going to head south through Mud Creek into our lake. We would like to recommend that we have four units per acre, not the 9.5. And we're simply asking the commission to think about our concerns and not approve all of the requests that they have made for variances. We're not against the development. We're just concerned about the effect it's going to have on our community, which is downstream from this new development. None of the requested variances are good for the Still Waters community. They're not good for our neighbors, Stonebridge, or the residents on Kennesaw View Lane and the side street off of Kennesaw View. We thank you for the time to present our concerns and hope that you will consider them.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other opposition comments? Seeing and hearing that a public hearing is closed, Commissioner Gorm, would you lead our conversation?
Sure, be happy to. I have a couple of questions of staff and possibly Mr. Huff. And Rob Hosak, could I have you come forward, please, regarding the distance between units in a RSL, supportive, non-supportive? Can you, can you give us a little bit of background on that?
Yes, ma'am. When we were going through the development of the ordinance, Commissioner, there were certain concerns as far as when there would need to be an expansion of a setback from a roadway, I think, to perhaps assist with limiting the view shed concerns that would arise if you were closer to a road versus pushing it back further away. I don't believe there was language in the code specific to moving them closer together. I think rather, there was a reliance on the fact that there had been site plan-specific zonings granted in the past, where oftentimes, they may be closer together. But if it is pointed out during the staff analysis that the setbacks have been reduced, that the board would be able to approve the project site. board would be able to approve the project site plan specific without actually having to send it back to the BZA for a formal variance, Commissioner Gorm. But there is, there was language put into the code and it was specifically to allow for the board to, and to put potential designers and developers on notice that there may be times that we're going to ask you to push the buildings further back from the roadway, and these are what the objectives are by putting that particular clause in the ordinances to protect view sheds and to make sure that topographic differences were taken into
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Huff, if you could come forward too. And again, as was stated, my concerns was, have been the view shed from Dallas Highway and from Kennesaw View. And two units were removed in both of those areas.
Correct.
There's also going to be some double stacks, which is basically combining two of the cottages or small homes to make the appearance of one large home, correct?
That is correct.
The height on that is going to fit within the regulations on the Dallas Highway corridor, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Um, and can you remark, can you make comment to the, the space between the remaining units at this point, maybe in a generality or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, the code does talk about 15 feet between structures. We've got 13 feet. It was a way for us to be able to preserve some, you know, as you can see on Dallas Highway, preserving, trying to preserve that tree and be able to create areas to preserve the tree. Also, it's very important to understand, the code allows for attaching, I think, up to six units. So, you could attach six and then 15, then six, then 15. So, we're actually, in terms of, you know, number of units in a row, we're going to be significantly less than what the code would allow. It's just instead of attaching units together and then having a separation between the sets of attach, four, Mr. Peterson, corrects me, it's four. So, you could have four.
Up to four attached before you have to meet the 15.
You could have 15, then four. So, what we wanted to have is, and if, is the very traditional neighborhood feel with the picket fence and the homes, and it's that look that, um, that the architect really was going for and the reason for the separation request.
I don't know. Commissioner Ott, you have a question, perhaps?
Yeah, what is the distance between the units on East Cobb, on the cottages?
It's much greater than the 13 feet.
Okay, alright.
Okay. But, but on the Dallas Highway side, you, you're, it appears you're going to be able to save that specimen tree.
Yes, that's what the plan.
Between the seven, between the seven units. And also to point out on the Kennesaw View, you've added those two areas of kind of entranceway, a pathway between those. And then you, you're providing the significant landscaping. So, the view shed from, from the road is going to be similar to what you have at, in East Cobb?
Yes.
With the almost double row of landscaping there. Okay. Thank you. Um, and perhaps I could have Dave Braden come forward, question about impervious surface and stormwater runoff. How much impervious is actually allowed on this site by code?
RSL is what, John? 55?
Yeah.
RSL is 55, and I think their computing is 60, 63%. So, they're, they're over. I would suggest that they would probably, well, the plan review would suggest that as much of the parking area could be used as pervious pavers and with that credit, they might be able to make it, make it.
And also possibly some of the pathways can be pervious pavers then, and that we can address, address the, uh, the impervious.
If I might add one thing, the runoff from this site does not go through Stillwater Lake. It goes to Mud, it goes to Mud Creek, but it does bypass the lake.
Oh, it does?
Everything on the south side of Kennes- of Kennes- what is it, Kennesaw? View, yeah, that all goes to the lake. But, this runs to the right of way of Dallas, down to Mud Creek directly. So, that is, that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. And presently on their, on their plan, what do they have proposed or is still being worked out as far as detention? There is a lake already on the property, I know.
I think they're, the feature, they're going to make it a.
Make it a feature.
In the north, it's going to be the northeast corner.
Northeast corner, correct.
Which is where the site drains to.
Okay, excellent. So, they're going to do kind of a natural detention there and use that as a feature there. And it doesn't drain into Stillwater Lake. It drains into Mud Creek.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I am prepared to make a motion. Oh, I know there was another concern. Sorry, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit. There was a concern regarding, I think it's number one on the stipulation letter, about the location of the garden homes, the cottages, the congregate care housing, where there may be some changes in their exact location, but not an increase in the number of units there. And when I read that, I had, I jumped a little bit because I'm aware of the input from the community out there. However, looking at item 16, which was supported heavily by the CCC, I thought that that was going to be enough of a coverage there, which states that the review process, um, the commissioner, the district commissioner is limited to what they can agree to change on a site plan as long as it doesn't reduce the size of an approved buffer, that it's the same or more restrictive zoning district, relocate a structure closer to the property line, and also change an access location to a different roadway. So, I'm a little concerned that we still have an issue about the ability of a district commissioner to make a minor modification, because none of what's being required or requested in this as far as possibly changing the location just a tad and not increasing the number of units, overall units, is, 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 is being addressed. So, I have all confidence that the stipulation, that those changes would fall under the category of a minor modification, because we are limited as commissioners if we do put in our stipulations the CCC recommendation that was highly touted. So, therefore, I am ready to make a recommendation to approve Z60. And pardon me as I get to, I know everyone's going, hurry up, hurry up.
Take your turn.
Okay, Z60. I'm going to make certain that I get the zoning category correct. To rezone the property from R20 to a blend of RSL supportive and RSL non-supportive. To include the site plan dated, and that was 10/13/14, is that correct, the latest site plan? To include the letter of stipulations dated October 15 of 2014. And one addition on that stipulations, I would like to include that filters be provided in the kitchen to reduce odor, the appropriate type of filters to do that. As the one addition to that stipulation letter, to approve all planning commissioners' comments and recommendations, all staff comments and recommendations, um, and not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments in the board? Call a question. Motion carries five, five zero. Thank you, commissioners. So, that takes cover our regularly scheduled agenda. We are now moving on to other business. Helen?
You're losing control of your board.
No, I don't.
I need a break. I asked for one.
Well, tough. Other business item number 35.
Number 35 was continued by staff, Mr. Chairman, so that's going to be heard next month.
I knew that.
So, we're going to move on to item number 60 right now.
Other business item 60, yes, thank you.
Purpose of this item is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Brooks Chadwick LLC regarding rezoning application Z27 of 2014. The property is located on the southeast side of Autobahn Drive, south of Fairfield Drive, in Land Lot 976 of the 16th District. By way back on the subject property was res- was rezoned earlier this year for a townhouse development. The applicant needs to amend some of the zoning conditions in order to develop the project. The applicant needs to amend the first, first bullet from the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes to reflect the proper unit size and width. Second, the applicant needs to add the phrase "not otherwise in conflict" to the end of the staff comments for fire, water and sewer, stormwater management, and DOT, which would better match the intent of the site plan and stipulation letter. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed stipulation amendments.
Thank you. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against other business item number two, other business item number 60? Seeing and hearing now the public hearing is closed. I'd see if your recommendation that the staff's proposed stipulation, just to say it.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to Exhibit B, received by the zoning division on September 16, 2014, subject to Cobb DOT comments and all previous conditions not in conflict.
So moved.
So moved. Do you have a second? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five oh. Item six, OB 61, please.
Other business item number 61 is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Greenstone Ventures Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z48 of 1994. The property is located on the easterly side of Cumberland Boulevard at its intersection with Cobb Galleria Parkway, south of I-75, and land lots 1014, 1015, 1026, and 1027 of the 17th District. The subject property was rezoned in 1994 to Regional Retail Commercial as part of a mixed-use development, which was amended in 2001 for a mixed-use office building on this property. The applicant seeks to amend the site plan in order to place their office development on the property. The proposed building would be 10 stories in height with a glass exterior, and there would be a five-level parking deck underneath the building. The applicant has reduced the number of curb cuts, from two curb cuts to one curb cut on Cumberland Boulevard, and the applicant has submitted an 18 paragraph stipulation letter which is attached for your review. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Is anyone wishing to speak for or against other business item 61? Seeing and hearing now the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to Exhibit B, received by the zoning division on September 16, 2014, subject to the site plan dated September 11, 2014, with district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Cobb DOT comments and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Commissioner, so moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five oh. Other business 62, please.
Thank you. Other business item number 62 is to consider a site plan stipulation amendment for TPA Group LLC regarding rezoning application Z22 of 1998. The property is located near the northwesterly intersection of Cumberland Boulevard and Acres Mill Road, the land lots 981, 1011, and 1012 of the 17th District. The subject property was rezoned in 1998 to Regional Retail Commercial as part of a mixed-use development known as Overton Park. The master site plan has been amended a few times since 1998 as market conditions have changed. The property was originally approved to have an 18-story, 350-room hotel, a restaurant, and an 18-story office building. The applicant seeks to amend the site plan in order to place their office and hotel, hotel development on the property. The proposed office building would be 16 stories in height. The proposed hotel would be 18 stories in height with 350 rooms. Both buildings would have exteriors featuring gr- glass, brick, stone, steel, concrete, and stucco. Additionally, both, both buildings would have an 11-story parking deck that would have 1,550 parking spaces that would serve both uses. The applicant has submitted a 21 paragraph stipulation letter which is attached for review. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Is anyone here wishing to speak for against other business item 62? Seeing and hearing now the public hearing is closed. What is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to Exhibit B, received by the zoning division on September 16, 2014, subject to the site plan dated September 15, 2014, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Cobb DOT and water and sewer comments and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you, Commissioner Ott.
Welcome me to the district. So moved.
Second.
I'll call a question. Motion carries five zero. OB 63.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Other business item number 63 is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Johnson Ferry Crossing Center LLC regarding rezoning application Z110 of 1984. The property is located on the east side of Johnson's Ferry Road, south of Liddo-Willia Road, the land lots 981, 1011, and 1012 of the 17th District. Subject property was rezoned in 1984 for an office park, subject to the site plan-specific zoning conditions. The applicant wishes to purchase one building on the property, which is building F shown on the attached proposed site plan. There would be cross-access and utility easements to serve all the buildings within the complex. The applicant will refurbish the building with a new interior, a new exterior, new landscaping, new signage, and new lighting. The building will be used for medical offices. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan amendment and stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing to speak on item OB 63 for or against seeing and hearing now the public hearing is closed with staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to Exhibit B, received by the zoning division on September 16, 2014, subject to the proposed site plan received by the zoning division on September 16, 2014, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Commissioner Ott, so moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. OB 64 was continued by staff. OB 65.
Yes, sir. Other business item number 65 is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Medical Development Corp. regarding rezoning application Z33 of 2014. The property is located on the west side of Bell's Ferry Road, on the south side of Shiloh Path, and on the east and west sides of Bartlett Circle, in land lots 148 and 149 of the 16th District. By way back on the subject property was rezoned to residential senior living in June 2014 for a senior living facility. One of the Board of Commissioners' stipulations stated that the line of sight for the four-story building be a maximum of two and a half stories from Bell's Ferry Road. The applicant has finished the final engineering and found that in order to accomplish this stipulation, a total of 7,000 truckloads of dirt, which is 78,000 cubic yards of dirt, would need to be removed from the property. This makes the project unfeasible to develop. The applicant is requesting that the building height viewable from Bell's Ferry Road be four stories. At this height, the building would still not be viewable from arbitrary subdivision due to the fact that the triplexes would still block the sight line. Our, Arden Trace has been contacted and they have submitted a letter saying that they are not opposed to this amendment. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and the staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against other business 65? Seeing and hearing now the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to removing bullet point number seven regarding the sight line from Bell's Ferry Road, subject to the building profile plans received on September 16, 2014 by, in the zoning division, and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to submit the email from Richard Nyberg, who represents Arden Trace, that he's, that they are in agreement with this, and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. OB 66, please.
Yes, sir. Item number 66 is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Navcar Builders LLC. LLC regarding rezoning application Z twenty-five of two thousand and thirteen, for property located on the north-westerly side of Sew Mill Road and on, and on the southwest side of East Piedmont Road in Land Lot Nine Fifteen of the Sixteenth District. By way back on the subject property was rezoned to R fifteen in two thousand and thirteen for a nine-lot subdivision with a private drive to serve all nine lots. Private drive accesses Sew Mill Road and East Piedmont Road, and this drive helps to reduce curb cuts along both public roads. This particular amendment has to do with the impervious surface the private drive creates on each individual lot. Each lot is limited to thirty-five percent impervious, and each lot has some amount of private drive on it. The developer does not want the private drive's impervious surface to count against, to count against each lot, which would severely impact some of the lot's development potential. The detention pond was designed to take into account the impervious surface for each lot and also for the private drive. There is capacity in the pond to accommodate this request, and the applicant has submitted an engineer's report verifying this fact. Also, during dependency of this application, it was discovered that the brick and stone privacy wall along both public roads was built too tall. The maximum height for a wall is six feet along a public road. The wall is built at seven and a half feet in some portions with eight and a half-foot columns. The wall is over a thousand feet in length, it would be very difficult to modify, and there are photos in your packet of the wall and the columns. Additionally, the wall does provide sound buffering adjacent to East Piedmont Road and Sew Mill Road, which carries eighteen thousand six hundred cars per day and thirteen thousand nine hundred cars per day, respectively. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against other business item sixty-six? Seeing a hearing now the public hearing is closed, what is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend that the applicant's request be approved, subject to stormwater comments, subject to stormwater management, approving each house on each lot prior to the building permit, and subject to the letters from Mr. Garvis Al-Sams Jr. dated September sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and October seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. Okay, with, I'm going to take the, the height of the wall first and say that I'm, I'm okay with that because of the buff, noise buffer on Sew Mill and Piedmont. I would like to add Mr. Garvis Al-Sams' letter dated October seventeenth for the record.
Okay.
And Mr. David Griffin's email in response to Mr. Ganuni's email, Mr. Griffin's email dated October sixteenth, and Mr. Ganuni's email dated October fifteenth. And I would also like to require pervious pavers for the driveways and walkways to make sure the impervious surface is under the maximum requirement for each lot.
Okay.
You got that?
Yes, and that comment about the pervious pavers is in the stormwater comments.
Thank you.
Right, I just want to be sure. And all other stipulations will remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. Will second the motion. Any comments? Call a question, motion carries five zero. I believe that concludes our agenda for today.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you.